Call the city council. Call the city council meeting to order at 6:00 PM. If everybody could join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The Republic of which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Sadie, can I get roll call, please?
Counselor Blevins.
Here.
Counselor Dolezal.
Here.
Counselor Hill.
Here.
Counselor McElroy.
Here.
Counselor Metcalf.
Here.
Counselor Ten Bush.
Here.
And Mayor Dr. Vanna's absent.
All right, moving on to the citizen and community group comments, we have two guests here tonight. First guest is Diana Helm from the Clackamas County Commission.
Mona, Commissioner Helm, thank you for joining us. I think we also have John Legarza on Zoom and Lizzie Keenan with Mount Hood Territory on Zoom. John's with Healthy Sustainable Communities, and they're just here for to participate in the conversation, Commissioner Helm, if you so choose, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, Council. Thank you for the invitation this evening. I've had some sidebar conversations with some of you over the last few weeks, actually months, I guess technically. I saw John at the conference today, so we were talking a little bit about this because so much of it was about economic development, which is a very big thing in Clackamas County, and it's actually now a priority for the state as of this last week. So I'll just start. John had very specific questions for me, but I might have more questions for you than I have answers, but I love your vision. Number one, I, you just have a gold mine out here, and it's so exciting to see the natural landscape, all the things you can do with it. You have you have a rare opportunity to grow in a way that that makes it uniquely Estacada. One of the things that John asked was how can the city of Estacada work collaboratively with Travel Oregon, Mount Hood Territory, and the Ag Tourism Program to position Estacada as a potential vineyard-to-table destination? I love this vision. This is great. Well, I love food and wine, so probably that has a little to do with it. And actually, we talked a lot about food today, too. That's a real growing economy for Oregon, and it's getting even bigger. So I want to see how we can tap into that. Now, question, I did not know this when you said now, as you know, we're within a suitable ABA climate zone for grape growing, and we already have vineyards just outside the city. And you would like my guidance on how best to align with state and regional tourism partners to elevate this opportunity. So part of the challenge, and I'll just compare Dundee, the Yamhill Valley, is that it's everything is kind of clustered there. And yes, you are in a, I would say, like a newer ABA climate zone. And as long as you're patient, because the timeline for growing grapes is four to eight years. So it's you have to be patient, and you have to have the people on board to help you do this. So question, John, have you been speaking to particular people about this? Is this something, is this the council's vision? Is this, is this, have you been approached by the winery people?
No, thank you, Commissioner Helm. I think one of the things that we're seeing is there are some wineries in unincorporated Clackamas County area that are already established. And so what we would like to do is if there's a way we could, you know, work with probably Mount Hood Tourism, Travel Oregon, and look at how we can kind of connect those operators to be able to have, you know, abilities to, you know, we do have in the downtown a wine restaurant bar that's doing, you know, very well, so be reaching out and having some assistance if we could coordinate Lizzie or who with your team, too, to meet those folks and make those connections, because I think that would be a great opportunity to provide that connection there, understanding that the ABA region takes some time, but from that standpoint, it would be great to see how we could develop that relationship and those connections.
Well, and that might be the opportunity to have like forum to bring in some of these businesses and see who's on board, right? Because it, Oregon requires fifteen to forty acres of continuous contiguous vineyards to qualify for winery production. So it's unclear whether the available properties inside city limits or outside the city limits meet those requirements. So Lizzie, thank you for providing me with all this wonderful information that I am new to, and she is the queen of all things tourism. But I'm going to let her jump in, because I want to talk about also the opportunity for funding to help you out with this, so.
Oh, great, yeah.
Yeah.
Can I jump in for just a minute, Counselor Ten Bush? I just wanted to comment here also, because this might be, talking about tourism in this specific of a matter might be kind of surprising to some of the council, but I know when we were meeting with the mayor, he was very interested in this. And he's, this has been a vision that he's had for a while, and so I think talking about it is great. And we also have some like cider places that grow their own apples.
Yeah.
But yeah, I just wanted to mention to the rest of the council, this is stemming from a conversation that we'd had with the mayor when we're talking about energy, economic development, tourism, all of that, too. So that's kind of where this is coming from.
And a way to grow your economy, diversify, and try to capture the people that are coming into your city, right? All year long, and that's, I think it's a great vision.
And it just so happened the mayor, it wasn't able to be here tonight, too.
I saw it on your note today, too. So, Lizzie, would you care to expand just a little bit?
Yeah, yeah. So I, thank you, Commissioner Helm, and everybody in Estacada, and John. I, sorry, I couldn't make it tonight in person. So a couple of things were touched on. I think in terms of bringing, especially like our Clackamas County wineries together, we many of, we run every year something called the Agri Tourism Summit for Clackamas County, and a lot of our wineries do participate in that. And so one idea could be to bring them together, kind of as an offshoot of that event, with some folks from Estacada, just to talk through what opportunities can be, because I almost got the impression, maybe, John, that it's not necessarily wineries coming in for vineyards, but also maybe getting local Clackamas County wines into like downtown businesses.
That's correct, Lizzie. That's kind of the idea we're thinking is like, how can, how can we connect with the established wineries in, you know, and the forum, that would be a great way just to introduce them to Estacada. And, you know, we see a lot of the wineries in these regions in the Willamette Valley that are partnered with cities and hosting us. So just kind of building that connection, yes. So that's what we're doing. We're not looking for vineyards in the city, so.
Okay, yeah, good. That's why I clarified that. So I think, yeah, we can definitely talk about that. We usually run that event in the springtime. And so that's probably, probably would be good timing for that. And then the other thing that I had mentioned to Commissioner Helm, that more info is coming in the next few months, but we are partnering with Clackamas County's Economic Development Office to have a grant program through them with tourism tax dollars for tourism businesses, both entrepreneurial businesses and more longstanding businesses. So there might be some opportunities to, that should launch hopefully in the springtime. But there's, that could be some growth opportunities for kind of new development or bringing, bringing winery business of some kind into Estacada as an option.
Thank you, Lizzie. So does that answer most of your questions on that, John?
Yes, that does, and we can share that, like Melanie said, we can share that with the mayor and the council. But yes, absolutely. We, we love that opportunity to connect and look forward to the grants, too, and the forum.
Right, and Lizzie, if I'm not mistaken, there's two $500,000 grants available, right? So they're, they're very sizable, and I don't know how they're going to be distributed, but there's an opportunity there to do something really fun and bring in a lot of people to the city. So I think this would be a great place to host it. All right, your next question was a pilot program, and the FAM Tour Ask, which I had to ask with the FAM Tour. It's not like when I call my kids the fam. This is the Familiarization Tour, which it says you're interested in exploring whether Estacada could pilot a small wide-to-table initiative to test market interest. And that might be, instead of doing this, because that's probably not the appropriate thing, I think the forum is probably a better place to do that. Do you agree, Lizzie disagree? I, I just, I think that you have to get all the right people in the same room, right? And have a discussion about it and find out who's interested in order to move forward.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think, yeah, being in the, in the room together to discuss kind of where everybody's at would be really valuable. The wine industry is in a, an iffy place right now. You know, there are shifting trends around wine consumption and just alcohol consumption in general. And then with some of the tariffs, just the wine industry and other alcohol beverage industries have, have been hit, kind of also generally just during the economic times. So it'd be very interesting, I think, to have conversations about the reality of the business, but new opportunities to, to sell product in different areas that they haven't before might be, you know, part of what they're interested in to diversify. We've seen that in other businesses, just kind of the expansion of agritourism was to help make businesses sustainable so they can do their core, you know, core business while also expanding to just stay, stay in existence. So, so yeah, my recommendation would be to have a sit-down meeting first to understand kind of where wineries are at and what, what they would be interested in before kind of immediately diving into a, a visit tour to, to sell the idea of Estacada, which is a great idea.
And we'll be serving wine, right, at this forum? I hope. So those are your two main questions. I just want to bring up that I went to the, the AOC concert, concert, the AOC Conference a couple of weeks ago, the Ameri, the Association of Oregon Counties. And there was, there was a lot of discussion about energy at this conference. And that's my next topic, because all of this kind of has to do with the growth of Estacada as well. Based on the letter that John sent me, I'm trying to put together a regional forum with our energy partners and other counties as well, to have everyone at the table to talk about overlay maps, so we can see how far does Northwest Natural go, where does PGE go, where, what infrastructure is here, what do we need, and what's it going to take to get it? I had conversations with Northwest Natural at this conference as well about getting this utility out here, because you could have a major expansion on your business park if you did have Northwest Natural. And we, you guys all know that, the CLT Place, I know that they would love to have a complementary company around them that's, that, that helps with their business. And I think that, I think there's a lot of opportunity to do something there. And I told John today that we're, we're working on that, and I will get back to him on when and where that form, it'll probably be first quarter. I know you asked for quarterly. I don't think it's going to be quarterly. I think we'll be lucky if we get it once or twice a year, because it's a, a pretty big forum to put on with a lot of different people, so. And it's a great idea. And I think regionally, we need to have that voice to go to Salem and say, this is what we need. We need the financial help. If the governor is truly intent on growing business in the state, she has to help out. She has to help out with infrastructure. She has to help out with grants. And, and I know that everyone says the pot of money is getting smaller, but I don't know, I see it being spent in places I wouldn't be spending it. So maybe we can just relook at our priorities. So do you guys have any other specific questions for me?
Sure. Good questions.
Yeah, on the energy side, what are we going to do for grant opportunities to do that? You mentioned PGE, or sorry, Northwest Natural Gas in, in specific, right? And we're well aware that that could help us immensely. In fact, it's been a conversation of ours a lot lately, as I'm sure you're well, and congratulations, by the way. I was glad to see that they appointed you.
Thank you.
That being said, though, what I'd like to know is what kind of grant opportunities, as we know, rough number, $30 million just off the top to bring it from where it is currently to where it would just start our business park, which it's not fair to put that on our constituents to try to figure out how to do it when they're trying to shove growth down our throat at state level as it is, right? So with that being said, is there any talk to alleviate that so that we can deliver our people some kind of good faith here, or what's the?
Well, I think step one is a, is a study. I think the study is the first thing on the list. After we met for the Souter Grand Opening the other day, I was talking to John also about how many people you brought out recently on a bus that are excited about your business park. And what excites me about that is private-public partnerships. And if you get enough people who all chip in something, and you don't have it be one particular jurisdiction's responsibility, then it's, it's going to help bring in a lot more people, because they're going to benefit from it, too. So I think those opportunities are huge, especially if you have that many people interested in growing out in your business park and in other parts of the city. And I, I'm not going to, I'm not going to, $30 million is not that much money. I mean, in the grand scheme of things, when you think about how much the state brings in, it should not be on the city of Estacada and your taxpayers to do this. I think it should be on the utilities, and I think it should be on the private parties and the businesses who will be benefiting from that. So, yeah, that's, that we're exploring that as well.
Okay. And then my second part to that question would be with the red tape, looking at it being a political conversation, the governor doubling down on climate, which I don't know how she feels about natural gas with that conversation, but then on the federal side, them deregulating NEPA and things like that, that would allow us to expedite this process, right? So is there any sort of relief coming from the, I guess, the public sector as far as public, court of public opinion, or?
I think what I heard today at the leadership, leadership summit was people are open to different, I mean, they even brought up nuclear energy. We need to look at different types of energy. We need to look at as many tools to put in the toolbox as possible. We can't lean on any one or eliminate one. I know that during the ice storms of 2021, I firmly believe people would have died if they didn't have Northwest Natural Gas to heat their homes and cook. It is, I know that, I think I just heard recently, the city of Bend is eliminating it in all new homes. It, I think we're shooting ourselves in the foot by doing that, and I'm a big believer in having options. And I think if we look down the road at, we have an energy crisis in Oregon with our regular PGE energy right now. And if we start eliminating the other ones, I, people do not think long-term. They're thinking about tomorrow, they're thinking about next week, and I think it would, we'd be doing ourselves a huge disservice if we were to do that. So I think what I heard today, again, this all came out this week, really interesting timing, that it's her Prosperity Oregon Program, which is the economic development part of it, and then she's also focusing on energy throughout Oregon. So it's, it's a conversation, and we need to, we need to have a tighter relationship with the state. Because as we heard during these breakout sessions today, when people come to Oregon to look for land to grow their business, they just go straight to the state. They don't come to the counties, they don't come to the cities, they don't want to bother with us. They want to go to the state. And I'm not sure the state and the counties are on the same page. So I think we need to grow those relationships and fix those relationships and make sure we're all singing from the same page of music.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, well, thank you, Commissioner Helm, for coming out and sharing this information. Look forward to what you come up with.
John and I will be working very closely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Lizzie and John, for being online with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our, our next guest is Fire Chief Ian O'Connor from Estacada Fire.
Hi. I'm Ian O'Connor, Fire Chief for Estacada. Thanks for having me here tonight. I wanted to talk a little bit about our strategic plan and the new station design proposal. I say new station, it's an addition remodel. Let you get the, get that up. The last spring, we started into developing a strategic plan for the district. It's a five-year plan that involved a whole lot of effort and time and community members and friends and family and everything in between. Melanie was present for part of that, Director Dolezal, or sorry, Counselor Dolezal was present for that. But we started down the path of developing a plan and direction for the fire district over the next five years. Now, we utilized Fitch and Associates as our third-party vendor to help us come in here and put this thing together. We went through, we did the community involvement sessions, we did the SWOT analysis. And then over the last several months, myself and the rest of the staff have been working like crazy on this thing to put it together. I didn't bring copies, but if anybody wants it, let me know. I'd be more than happy to email it, drop it off. We put enough time and effort into this. I want as many people to read it as is willing to look at it, so. So we looked at what's working well, what could be enhanced, what could be done differently, looked at all our finances, the annual reports, member surveys, and ultimately landed on a final document, which I brought one with me, because I'll probably reference it. At the October Board Meeting, the board officially adopted this five-year plan, which really sets the path for us moving forward, and we'll move to the next. With that, we reestablished our mission statement, our vision statement, our values. Those are up there for you, but we, we spent probably half a day just going over this thing, looking at single words in those statements and deciding what fit best. And as an organization, that's where we landed. So new mission statement, to provide professional emergency and community services to districts, residents, and visitors. Our vision is to remain a highly talented department that cultivates success, defends a positive organizational culture, and exceeds the ongoing needs of our community. And then our values change to talented, resilient community. Talented is attracting, developing, retaining excellence. And then resilient, fostering strength, teamwork, and a supportive environment, and a community meeting needs with dedication and service. And we're very proud of our new, our new statements as listed there. So you'll start seeing them show up on shirts, TNN hats, and everything in between. So what all this does for us gives us guidance, gives direction over the next five years. And instead of kind of just going out and saying, well, I think we want to go after this this month or next month, we actually have a path. So our desired outcomes are what we want to achieve. We have our five strategic goals for each one of our pillars, which are broad priorities. We have administration, operations, support services, fire and life safety, and then workforce development and organizational sustainability. And then with that, each one of our chiefs has an assignment to that, and then it's backed up by another chief officer. And from there, we're able to bat that around and bring it together, so. In the next slide, you'll see how we've started to progress already. It's only been two months since we adopted this thing, and we've already made a bunch of progress in that, and that's mostly because firefighters are pretty type A personalities. And so they're pretty hell-bent on pursuing things. So we've already increased our George Station staffing. We've already started into a new record management system, which is going to allow us to pull data. We already have a drone program. You guys have probably seen a lot about that. It's been flying around town like crazy lately. We're in the process of hiring a part-time fire inspector. We purchased two new staff vehicles, and that leads us to the fire station addition and remodel. And there is a drawing of what we envision that to look like from the Fourth Street side. So with that, we're doing, looking to do an addition. It's additional 5,000 square feet. It adds two pull-through bays, gives us a turnout locker room, SCBA clean room, turnout washroom. There's a mezzanine in there for storage, and then there's a physical fitness facility in that as well. And as that is there, it would actually take the, take over on what is Southeast Current Street right now between Fourth and Jeremy Loveless. Phase two is the addition of, or addition, it's the remodel of what is currently one big storage area of our heavy brush, turnout lockers, our physical fitness, and various other things and stuff. It's very cramped in there. But with the addition there, we would do a remodel, and that would also help us gain six additional dorms for sleeping, more turnout lockers, more EMS supply room. Right now, we're very limited in what we can do for additional staff and additional volunteers. We only have so much room for the turnouts and lockers, and this opens that up to allow for an additional 14 volunteers and allows us to actually sleep up to 13 overnight. So we have volunteers that are willing to stay, stay the night and respond to calls, but we don't have anywhere for them to sleep unless they want to sleep in a big lazy boy chair out in the dayroom, which sometimes they do, but most of the time, they're, they're looking for somewhere to sleep, and so this, this helps alleviate that. And phase three would be the backside of the building, and that's kind of to the, to the right there on the picture. And that becomes office space, puts us all under one roof, gives us a larger training room. We go from a 800-square-foot room to about 2,000-square-foot, gives us about a 600-foot, square-foot conference room. And gets us out of that modular building, which is definitely starting to wear. Effectively, what it becomes down to is being one, becomes one like a big, a single-story house, so to speak. It sits on the back. It's not attached to the building, but it appears to be attached to the building. And then up here, I listed as phase three. It's actually phase four. That was my typo on there. But the training center moves from its current spot situated on the southeast corner to the northeast corner, and we would put a four-story burn tower there, which replaces our current outdated training props, which actually met their life expectancy in 2021. We just keep limping them along, but we have to do something different with that. So changes the location of that. It's not on the drawings here, because it's a little bit further down the road, but that's the path that we're headed on. So our next steps, first big hurdle is to vacate Southeast Current Street between Fourth and Jeremy Loveless. We've started that process. We have to move our power underground. Currently, it comes over the building where we would put a building. You can't have that. We have to have the power moved to Southeast Fourth and then go underground from there over to the existing facility. We got to do a survey, replat, there's engineering, and then source the building materials. And Director Miller is here with me. He's, he's very aggressive in this, that we're going to start by April 1. So we've got a lot to do in a short amount of time to do it. So with all that information, I feel like I just kind of blurted it all out there for you in just a few minutes, but you guys have questions?
Anybody have any questions for the chief? Go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, what's the plan for current? Just get rid of it altogether?
Yeah, so it would be, it would be vacated, and then we have the pull-through bays there so that fire apparatus can drive through. And then, yeah, it becomes vacated, so it's not a city street effectively. And we take that over, and there's some issues with storm drain and things like that that still need to be figured out. And that's going to be partially for the city to help us figure that out, engineering, things of that nature.
Go ahead, Melanie.
I was wondering if you could talk about why it's not really feasible to, to leave current there and then build the other bays over on the property? I think there's a reason for that, but.
Yeah, and so it's, a lot of it has to do with the, with connecting the facilities and then having those pull-through bays. As, as this community builds, you know, we're going to need, at some point, we're going to have to get a ladder truck. That's just what it comes down to. What that looks like, you know, we're not that far. But we need that ability to be able to pull through from one side to the other. If we go on one, one lot or the other, that goes, goes away, and then we don't get the depth that we need between what currently exists with, with the lots that are, that are there.
Is there a, a traffic study for something like that? And, and what I'm thinking of is that's my commute home is, is, is heading up that way. And when people coming down the hill, everyone goes down, um, current like that. And so what impacts are going to have on, on that intersection there? And maybe we need to look at some. on current like that. And so what impacts are going to have on on that intersection there? And maybe we need to look at some improvements on that intersection.
Same here. I travel that road as well. I'm concerned. There's a lot of traffic.
A lot of people travel that road.
Yeah.
It's actually awfully hazardous for our guys that are out there trying to get back and forth between the training center.
Noted, but also it's going to be a huge congestion issue, I I feel.
It's going to bring a lot more traffic, you know, a lot more traffic right here. You know, during the commuting times, you know, to and from. And I just fear that that, you know, our stop sign is going to become ingested or four-way stop.
A light would solve that, but at the same time, that's we can look into that.
Go ahead, Matthew.
Yeah, if that were to happen, I don't know if I don't think it'd be on them, but are you guys working with ODOT at all for anything, any of this?
We're outside of ODOT's realm there.
This is something I'm sure we'll have to talk about. We've talked about several times over is having a traffic change right here and finally have the turn maybe a little I mean, no, like, but I talk about the new traffic change or whatnot. Are you guys planning on putting any sort of lighting for indication of a fire truck going in and out on getting on a 224?
No, not because of cost. We'd have to come up with the money for that. You know, this is the better alternative for us to do this addition and remodel. You know, we're probably in it for $5 million all the way around versus 20 million if we want to go and find a new place to build.
Chief O'Connor, every time I've heard your name, it's been positive. So I do appreciate your care to our community and the the improvements that you've brought with it since you took in your tenure. I just wanted to start with that, but also I'd like to say with this, thanks for answering the cost question. That was my my big question. I know you guys, I thought came in fairly low in general, even for your bigger project that you started at, but to hear that you were able to shave that down to 5 million, that's incredible. With what Commissioner Helms was speaking about earlier, maybe there could be some economic ties there or some creative ways that we could try to work towards supporting this so that we can help. But when I look at that, do you see 10 years from now in that building still?
Yeah. And that's the question that we asked internally of ourselves is, you know, how long are we going to make this happen for? And because of the location of it and where our call volume lies, we're right at the heart of it. So that is the spot. And there's obviously going to mean to need to be substations, you know, farther to the north, spring water, things like that, but that's a little farther down the road and this is this is our best way to get where we need to be in short a shorter time and most cost-effective.
With energy and stuff being a priority, I'd be curious to see if there could be opportunities in burnt forest utilization and things like that for grant opportunities to incentivize something along those lines. I'd be interested in looking if there's ways we could work with you to support you in this to provide a more resounding structure for you, something more efficient.
Project is all about creativity. I mean, it really is to to get there without having to go out to the voters for more money. That's that is where we're at and that's what we're going to stick to. And if we need to part and make partnerships or whatnot, I mean, that's that's where we're at, but finding more money, finding grants, I've done pretty well with grants over time, but this is a different animal and building the station, doing an add-on remodel is is new for me. I haven't done it. So it's new territory.
Anybody else have any questions?
No, it looks beautiful though. I like it. It's tasteful. I was just concerned about the congestion and the safety and security of driving.
That's probably the biggest question we get.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, Chief O'Connor. Thank you. Appreciate you bringing this information forward. Looks like you guys have put a lot of work into the into putting that together. So we appreciate all that you do.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
Okay, so forgive me for not doing this at the beginning of the meeting, but if anybody would like to speak during this the citizen and community group comment section, will you please fill out a form and turn it into Sadie? I forgot to say that at the beginning of the meeting. So I do have two in front of me. First one I have is Sarah Welton.
Hello. Um, I wrote some notes. Well, I wanted to speak today about, I know that the city has given direction to Clackamas County Sheriff's Office for towing for tagged. Instead of tagging vehicles, there are straight towing vehicles with expired tags up and down lake shore. It's happened to myself. It's happened to my neighbors. There should be a process of warning people and not just towing their cars at 3 o'clock in the morning or while they're at work. There is a process to do this, and I know that this direction came from the city of Estacada and was given to Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. So I'm not sure what the protocol is exactly on that. But usually you sticker a car or warn somebody and not just tow vehicles. It's happening to multiple people in the city. It's December also. I've had a stolen car that sat in front of my house for six months and nobody would even come and look at it. There's vehicles all over the place that are dumped and you guys are targeting a specific area. I don't think that's right, so. Thanks.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thanks for sharing that. I can look into that.
All right. Next, uh, next I have Shirley Burke.
Okay, I'm back on Sixth and Broadway and River Mill District. Okay, we okay, got it. Okay, to do this work and get it done. But in the meantime, it's not done, but I know Coyote Ridge contractor paid for all the stop signs that were in that were put in there. But they shouldn't have been a priority over Sixth and Broadway and and River Mill. I mean, kids' safety comes before making money or doing whatever with contractors. That kid's safety is number one. It always will be number one with me. And you, I mean, I'm saying, I like I sing a story every damn time I come down here. But Broadway and Sixth needs to be done. A kid almost got hit there yesterday. And it needs to be done before any other contractors get their work. I mean, you guys did Hillway and a couple of other ones. Only one I really didn't care, really appreciated when you did Pierce behind the school. That was number one over River Mill technically, but River Mill needs to be done. Period. It was okay by you guys to get it done. And it seems like everybody's just dragging their feet on that road until somebody gets hit, either a kid or somebody that's crossing because nobody uses turn signals up there. People don't know how to drive. They'll just, I mean, you got to go straight and all of a sudden somebody just turns right in front of you. And then also I'm concerned today, Melanie, with the rain. I would like to know, I'm looking at those ditches up there by the library and and the pond, the ponds out there anymore, but that creek. I mean, we've we flooded in 2008. We were out in the middle of Casado Court at 2 o'clock in the morning, sandbagging. And most of it was caused because the ditches were not cleaned and the the thing on the library grate was not pulled. And we don't really need it. I mean, I have I have a neighbor, but he's burnt out right now, but he has a maple. And there's leaves everywhere. We have to go out every day and clean that all those leaves out of this. That drain keeps flowing. And I know we've talked to code enforcer about the house. But it's not being taken care of either. It needs either cut the tree down or trim it down so it doesn't affect the whole neighborhood. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley.
Didn't you just send out a communication on that? I thought I saw something along those lines for the weather.
Stop signs.
No, the weather and everything.
I don't recall. I don't recall that, what you're mentioning. I do know that our Public Works Director, our Public Works Department does not install stop signs in the new subdivisions that are being built. And they do have plans to get that Sixth and Broadway done, so it will be it will be done shortly. It is. It's on the list. It's been approved and it's moving forward, but there's other. Yeah. And Public Works will also be monitoring that the creek with the improvements to Wade Creek Pond, Pond not being there, the outfall being reconstructed and the the culvert where the creek goes under the road now is widened out so it doesn't back up water as much. It's it's all for the best. However, we will keep an eye on that for sure.
Thank you. Now we move on to the consent agenda. Does anybody wish to pull anything from the consent agenda before we start?
Yeah, I'd like to pull item F.
Okay, pull item F from the consent agenda, move it down to council business.
Okay, we'll do that.
Okay. All right. With that being said, can I get a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda minus item F being moved to council business.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? All right, that's a consent agenda is approved. Moving on, we're now at Department and Committee Reports. I'm going to hand it over to Melanie.
Okay.
For the managers' report.
I have a little slideshow and I will try to move through it quickly because I know we have a lot on the agenda tonight. First of all, I have a few slides here that's just images from Friday night, which was so delightful. So you can kind of move through those, Sadie, and I'll just keep this up where I can read it. But I wanted to say thank you to Harvest Market, PGE, Reliance Connects, a group of guys, Ben Wheeler at Aaron Duran, Mike Mofford, Matt Dane, Scott Crosby for helping get that tree installed and lit up. The tree actually came from Scott Crosby. And then Ryan Litherland, who was our train conductor. That was a lot of fun. Mike Wagner playing Santa Claus, Don't Tell the Kids and Courtney O'Burness as Elf Security and also Smile Encourager. To try to get some good photos with those little ones. And then the people cooking, serving and cookies and cocoa at City Hall and we had vendors. And Connie Redmond, I will call her out because she was single-handedly almost coordinating the whole thing as well as the rest of the DEC for making that magic happen. It was and it was perfect. The weather gave us a little break so that we were able, everybody was able to get out and enjoy it. We estimated maybe 500 people were there. It was just a lot of fun and really a good kickoff for the holiday season. So thanks for supporting that and I hope everybody enjoyed it. All right. And then I want to give a quick update on our water loss investigation or water. We're supposed to call it water loss, but our water. What's that? That's right. Unaccounted for water. I called the wrong thing. Because we have been working on this this year. They can see the timeline on the left. December 1st, we got a report back from the boots on the ground folks who came based on the satellite imagery that was provided, found three leaks, according to them. One was a fire hydrant that hydrant that we can easily remedy. It just means that didn't probably get closed all the way. There's a pebble or something in there that's caught allowing it to leak. And then two locations in the newer neighborhoods. But the leak was the leaks in both places were so small, it was really hard to pin them down. So we're not completely sure. Public Works is having another company come out. They're going to do a double check on that. They listen to where they can hear leaks and see if we can get any, you know, any confirmation of this or before we tear up the streets, try and look for a leak or see, you know, what else they might find. This kind of supports Dawn's theory that our our pipes, water pipes don't leak, they burst. If there's a problem, there's it's a burst pipe. And so it turns us back to like figuring out what's the real issue here. So I want you to know we're working on it. We don't, I don't really have any answers other than we're like, we're checking things off the list and it's not this, it's not that, whatever. So we are continuing to press forward on that because we do have good budget for it this year to hire people to help us out and that's the plan. And then a side note that that's on the water side, on the wastewater side, INI, which is groundwater that gets into the sewer lines. That project is we're going to hire some folks in January to TV our lines, figure out where the you have the largest problems are and then get those those pipes taken care of as well. So we'll keep every year we whittle away on that INI. But this year we're really hitting that hard because we were allotted a good amount of budget for that. All right. Wanted to let you know that we have requested the addition of streetlights along Main and Sixth. There's several streetlights already on poles, but there are several poles that are existing. They don't have streetlights on them, so sent them into PGE, Don met with PGE, talked about the lights. We got the cost sheet back, got that signed and sent off. So that is in the works and hopefully will light up the school campus area better along Main Street. And then when you turn right on Sixth, that goes between the junior high and the high school or middle school and high school. So hopefully that is going to help with some lighting, at least until we can at some point do more pedestrian level lighting would be great like we have down here. This really lights it up with the pedestrian level lighting. But for now, we'll at least get some streetlights added. And then we did have 30 mile per hour signs installed on River Mill Road following a traffic study that was done there. But the county did the study for us, sent it up with our authorization to the state, so it was allowed to get changed and those 30 mile an hour signs have been installed. It was unmarked previously, so that means if it's unmarked, it's 55. There's probably some people that go 55 on that road. It's not not really conducive to 55 and this the speed study bore that out by allowing it to be put down to 30, so. Because it's based on a lot of what traffic is actually doing. And then lastly, I wanted to let you know that our Eagle Creek Pump Station, which is you head out of town on Eagle Creek Road. It is, you'll see it on the right-hand side as you're halfway between River Mill and Deuce. The contractor, for some unknown reason, has abandoned the project. Our engineers were working to reengage the contractor, giving them every opportunity to pick it back up and get moving again, and it's not happening. There's been no progress, so we're going to work with the bonding company toward the completion of the contract to another company and move it forward. There won't be any financial impact to the city, but it has been a time loss. And so we're moving forward on that. And if you have any questions, I could answer that or we can have Eddie Carr answer that as well when they come up later. All right. Any questions on anything?
Anybody have any questions for Melanie?
Yeah, is there a timeline? Is there like a specific time that done, people are always going to go put those stop signs on Main and Sixth?
Sixth and Broadway.
Broadway. What was it last? I mean, we approved this a while ago.
I think you approved it like your last, was it November?
It was just this last meeting that we we pulled it out of the consent agenda just for the community to be aware. We didn't pull it out, but we discussed it before we voted on approving the consent agenda, just stating that this was something so that everybody was aware that we were moving forward on and that's been assigned, so.
It has been.
That's been like what I've been hearing a lot of like that. Once that was brought up, man, that
Everybody's ready for it.
Everybody's looking forward.
I hope I hope it turns out well. They Don told, I asked him just recently, I believe he said before the end of the year, but kids will be out of school here shortly. And it'll, the traffic there will slow down and they'll be able to get that done. They've got the
next year and have those stops.
Yeah, yeah. And they've got the traffic change ahead signs lined up. He's ordered more of those and so hopefully that all will go well and will be helpful for that. I know most of the time it's there's not a lot of cross-traffic, but during the busy times, it's a tough one. So hopefully this is going to be a help.
Anybody else have any questions for Melanie? Okay, we're going to move on to committee, commission and liaison reports. Does anybody have anything to report from their commissions? Go ahead, John.
So I made it to the library board meeting and with Travelers closed, the library was doing an event at Travelers, but now that's closed, they're moving it back to the library. I don't think beer is going to be involved at the library. But the idea itself of doing library events in places in town is a neat idea and I hope they pursue it with some of the other locations we have here. The December calendar is packed, so if you get a chance, I don't know if it comes through the through, I think it's on maybe Facebook, but the the December calendar for the library is absolutely packed. They do so much stuff for the community. They are working with the Interactive Museum of Natural and Cultural History to develop a an interactive contribution of Native Americans to culture. And they have a program called Reading to the Dog. I think that's so neat. I guess it's for some people, just reading to a dog, there's not that that worried about a person's response. And so we actually talked about because it's a particular dog of maybe reaching out to other therapy animal, be it um, be it llamas or whatever it is, um, uh, just to have some, some additional resources. I thought that was great. And then just wear and tear, they're, uh, replacing the heat pump. Um, I didn't know they have seven of them, but I guess one of them needs to be replaced. But a lot going on at the library.
All right, uh, anybody else? Go ahead, John.
Yeah, the school board's just resummarizing essentially all the stuff that they're trying to dial in with getting ready to reassign the schools or that the kids are going to and getting ready to advance that. And then dealing with, uh, trying to be ahead of if they were to expect some funding cuts just with this next, uh, budget cycle and and shorten all these sessions coming up. They're not sure where education's going to land, so they're kind of trying to anticipate a little bit and prepare in their budget for what that will look like. Um, the school is scoring really well. In fact, they're like the number one place in the country for workforce or something like that. They just received another award about it, which is great. Um, and then they are very, very excited about working with the city as far as the light, the lighting and the safe routes to school, addressing that issue. That was something that they had brought up and that they'd stated at the council meet, or at the, excuse me, the school board meeting that they, that they were pretty excited about working with the city and communicating and building that relationship. Um, both the communications team and Superintendent Carpenter, uh, spoke on that. So I thought that was really cool to see our partnerships with these other districts in the community strengthening and with an improvement. There was, I would like to encourage people that it's the holidays and it's different vibes for everybody right now. Uh, there was a complaint about kids and bullying and physical aggression and stuff like that, and I believe the school district is going to address it, but I'll just say it now. Please tell your kids to observe respect, keep their hands to themselves. We don't want violence in this community, and we do not want people being bullied and picked on. So. That was brought to the school board meeting. I trust that they will address that issue, but if it's not, it's been stated here that we don't tolerate it. We don't support it, so. That's what I got.
Uh, Mike? Go ahead, Matthew.
I have traffic and safety, so this is always fun. Um, I think we've discussed a lot, uh, of traffic and safety over the last several months, so I just want to keep that on, that, that it's important that the city talks about it. Anytime I talk to anybody out there, something about traffic and safety is coming up. Um, one recently that was brought up was the, uh, speed sign entering Estacada, the 45 mile an hour sign being moved farther out. Um, they were talking about Jake breaks. I think we remember when that guy came in, but I don't. Just moving that out farther would just make, make it, make people slow down sooner because, I mean, we've all dealt with it. People don't start slowing down until they're in town, and then they hit 45, past the 35 mile an hour sign. Um, I don't think a study with six noted Jake break incidences is necessary to move that out. I don't know if, uh, we need to move it out, basically, uh, and there's no reason not to. Also adding a speed zone ahead sign, just like every other city around here has. So I just wanted to bring that up again, so.
Appreciate that. I believe that's something we would have to get in touch with, uh, ODOT on because it's the the highway, but, um, but yeah, I agree. I mean, I'd love, yeah, I'd love to see that sign moved out. Uh, Jonathan?
Yeah, I spoke with Councilman Morey on this on the side a little bit, and he had dug into the ODOT process for us with his, on his own time, just kind of dug into, yeah, thank you. Like dug into it, and it, it's quite the extensive process. I mean, granted, I didn't have a very long conversations about this. I spent about 20 minutes on the phone with him just discussing the preliminary things, and there was like a checklist of engineer study and so on and so forth that goes with it. It's at the point where we'd be asking a lot of volunteer force to look at it. I'd be interested in seeing if the city staff would look at taking over that portion of. Just give us a summary. I'm not trying to direct you or anything, but I'd be curious to see if, if there's something we could do where the community members aren't filing, like engineer plans and stuff like that, if I remember, where it's something that it called for and that. And I just, I think, one, for liability purposes here, and two, before talking about taking it into ownership, I think that maybe from the permit and process side of it, the city could be responsible for it. I mean, they've brought us the routes too now. I mean, I, I don't know. I'm curious of council's opinion on that as well. Obviously, I'm speaking for one person here, but.
Well, and it's been noted for months. I mean, forever, I mean, this has been going on for so long to say we need six, six, I don't know, what, what do you call it, uh? Six different people complaining about four different instances.
Yeah.
I mean, we have probably have hundreds of them. I mean, they haven't written them out because that we're just now being brought this to say, hey, you know, write it out like dozens and dozens and dozens of them. So do every single one of these need a backdate every single time that this happened? Because then they'd get a stack this thick, and they're just, yeah.
Do we have the capacity to take whatever that process is on?
Absolutely. Um, and we had, in the past, we've asked ODOT about lowering the speed coming into Estacada. They do have to do a speed study, um, back, this was probably years ago. And they're like, we just warn you that sometimes when you do a speed study, the speed goes up because people are just going too fast. And in this case, I think Estacada has grown enough. There's, there's a lot more traffic. I think that it is time to do a speed study and find out, you know what? I don't, I just can't imagine that it would go in the wrong direction at this point, but I think that we can start working with ODOT to try to get that, um, get that process moving. So we're not just saying, hey, the Jake bake brakes are bothering us. Here's enough, another enough complaints, but actually that we do need to reduce the speed coming into town. Needs to start back at River Mill or wherever. I'm not sure where it needs to start, but they could figure that out and.
Especially with the mill.
Yeah.
Coming into play and the conversation and such like that. I mean, being ahead of this, being proactive. Regardless, the, the complaints are super important as well, but just thinking ahead to.
Right. There's so many people using Timber Park. There's a daycare out there now.
Yeah.
Um, there's, there's just been changes.
Oh, yeah, people pulling out, uh, pulling out of Timber Park.
Yep.
Going out, I mean, going across three lanes to get into a 55 mile an hour speed zone.
Yes, we, I had reached out. I was just looking back to see if I had already asked him about this, but I had reached out to our District One person um, about the trees block the view of the signs too. Um, and so I'd reached out to him about that, but I'll also go back and circle back and Dawn and I can start working on them on.
Yeah.
Take a look at the speed. It needs to be reduced a little farther back.
Yeah.
Plus, we've had a lot of accidents at Second recently, so, uh, I think it's time.
That's kind of where I was going to go with that. It's like, we already have a case built of the things that are projected to grow, especially with current being shut down, and there's no streetlight right here, so you're going to have that extra people whiz right out of there. And if you got people coming in this way, and then the congestion's just going to build, it's going to get worse, and we're going to see more accidents. So if we have a case to build to show ODOT, hey, this is what our data is, can you please help us? Rather than it just being, hey, Jake breaks. No offense, but I'm just saying, you know, multiple things rather than just one, so.
Oh, yeah, no, there's multiple things. And then, you know, with the tourism and bringing all these, you know, trying to bring, uh, people out here to enjoy our city, I think traffic and safety, traffic in general is extremely, we need to get, we need to get ahead of this. We're, we haven't even caught up to where we're at, and we're still falling behind. We need to get ahead of this. So, and then, you know, the fire department is talking about taking one of, probably one of the most used roads out. I am impartial on that one at this moment, however, um, there's going to be so many different things we need to do and have needed to do, so just want to keep that right up on top.
Okay, uh, Councilor Dolph, okay, you have anything? Okay, um, I, uh, had the pleasure of going to the Christmas tree lighting and, uh, standing up in front of 500 people. Freaked me out. Um, but it was, it was a good time. Uh, uh, we had a little bit of a, a delay from the countdown and the switch getting flipped to the lights coming on, but I guess that's, you know, that it's not the first time, won't be the last.
Magic was a little.
Yeah. Yeah, but, um, it was a, an amazing turnout. Um, uh, great atmosphere. Uh, Melanie and I handed out, uh, glow sticks to the kids and, uh, um, we, one thing we did notice is that the square, the lighting in the square is terrible. Um, the lighting in the square was absolutely terrible, so, um, that's something that we're going to, you know, look at in the future. Um, is bring, you know, better lighting for that area. Um, yeah, but it was, it was an amazing time, and, uh, people really enjoyed the, the train. I hope he comes back next year and, um, it, like I said, it was a great time. And, and kudos to the downtown Estacada Commission. They, the, that group really puts a lot of energy and effort into their events, and they did an amazing job. So, um, yeah, I just want to say a great job to them, so, but that's all I got. All right, so now we're going to move on to our public hearing. Um, I will now close the Estacada City Council meeting and, uh, open the public hearing on ordinance 2025 dash zero one zero and ordinance amending Title 16, Development of the Estacada Municipal Code, Amending the NCR Zone.
That's it.
So, uh, do any members of the council wish to abstain or declare ex parte comment, uh, contact? Okay, the staff will, or the council will now hear the staff report on the proposal.
All right. Thank you, Councilor Ten Bush. Good evening, council, everyone here tonight. Um, so, yeah, I will be presenting the planning commission's recommendation for ordinance 2025 dash zero one zero. Um, so first, a little bit of background about this ordinance. Um, so in June, city staff hosted an online pre-application meeting that included the Grace, um, Grace Crossing Bible Church, their development team. And at that meeting, uh, the attendees discussed proposals relating to lots on which the church is located. Um, and then in late August, I met again with the church's development team to discuss a longer range plan to convert the existing daycare facility into a K-12 school, following the annexation of those church lots into city, um, into city limits. Um, and then the following week, I confirmed that because schools are not a permitted use in the NCR, that's the North City Residential Zone, uh, our development code would need to be amended to include an allowance for schools before the conversion from a daycare to a K-12 facility could be approved. Um, at that time, I also suggested that the church's development team pursue this code amendment by requesting it at a planning commission or a council meeting. So Pastor Brent Dodger, um, he attended the September 8th council meeting and requested amending the NCR Zone code to allow schools as a conditional use in the NCR Zone. And so the council directed staff to draft this amendment, and last month, the planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the ordinance. And the ordinance proposal is, it's pretty simple. It just, um, it just amended, amends this Coach After EMC 1625040 to include schools as a conditional use in the North City Residential Zone. And I'll show you the code language here. It's kind of small down there. I'll read it. So it would just add one line to this, to this section. And so there'd be a conditional use permitted, um, for a new public school or any private school offering curriculum similar to a public school. And that language is lifted directly from the, um, the low density residential, the R1 Zone code. Okay, so in order for the council to adopt this ordinance, which involves amending the city's development code, all relevant approval criteria must be met, and so that includes statewide planning goals, um, any relevant goals from the comprehensive plan, and also, um, chapter has to satisfy chapter 16128 of the development code. So we'll start with that chapter now. And so there are four sections in 16128. Here's the first. And it states that legislative amendments may be initiated only by planning commission or city council. And as I mentioned, uh, it was initiated by city council back in September, and so this criterion is met. And the second, or these three, planning commission makes a recommendation to city council upon completion of a public hearing. So that's what's happening right now. And then the planning commission and council need to adopt findings to establish that the amendment will not conflict with provisions of the development code or the comprehensive plan, and then the legislative amendment may be made after council or by council after the planning commission um, recommendation and after public hearing. So we're in the middle of this process now. And these criteria will be met. Um, it's about findings, so this is just basically about the report after the hearings. Findings shall be made in writing, be made public, and they need to be consistent and in conformance with all applicable regulations of the um, Estacada Municipal Code and the comprehensive plan. And again, we're in the middle of that process now, and those criterias, those criteria will be met. And then finally, no similar amendment or no application for and amendment to the development code shall be considered by planning commission within one year immediately following a previous denial of a request or substantially similar request. Um, no similar amendment has been proposed and then denied in the past year, so this criterion is met. And I can move forward with discussing the statewide planning goals. Okay. So the city sent published information about this hearing to the local paper and on the city website, uh, sent notice to the State Planning Agency, that's DLCD, and is following all other pertinent land use laws related to public hearings. So these procedural goals have been met or are being met currently. And so here's a list of, um, the state and the comprehensive, comprehensive plan goals that do not apply to this amendments. As you can see, it's most of them, um, and here's the list. However, there is one statewide planning goal and one comprehensive plan goal chapter that pertained to this amendment, and that's statewide planning goal 11 and a chapter nine from the comprehensive plan, both related to the provision of public facilities and services. Okay, so the aim of statewide planning goal is to plan and develop a timely, orderly, and efficient arrangement of public facilities and services to serve as a framework for urban and rural development. And the goal of chapter nine, co- co-plan chapter nine, objective three is to provide sufficient land for school facilities. And so by adding schools to the list of conditional uses in the NCR Zone, this ordinance expands the area within city limits in which school facilities may be located and thereby supports both of these goals. And so the planning commission recommendation is to approve this ordinance without any conditions of approval. And that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Um, does anybody have any questions from the presentation? Okay, is there any correspondence regarding this application?
There were two letters of support that were included as exhibits to the report.
Okay, then, uh, statement about evidence presented at the hearing. An issue which may be the basis for an appeal to Luba must be raised prior to the close of the record at the final evidentiary hearing on a specific app, application. Such issues shall be raised with sufficient specificity so as to afford Luba and all, or and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. Failure of an issue to be raised at the hearing in person or by letter, or failure, failure to provide sufficient specificity to afford Luba and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to Luba on that issue. Um, does any member of the audience wish to speak on this ordi- ordinance? I do have, uh, one speaker forum, that's Brent Dodger. Um, can you please step up to the microphone and give your full name and address before speaking?
Thank you very much. Brent Dodger, 145 Northeast Current Street, Estacada, Oregon. Thank you again for allowing me to be in front of you. First of all, I want to, uh, thank you for your support and then remind you that you have an amazing staff. So as I've worked through this process, Melanie and Alan and Sadie have all been amazing in providing the information we've needed. So I just want to remind you that we're moving ahead, and we've made this request because the heart of our church is to be of service to the community. Uh, we feel that's how Jesus lived his life. That's how we want to move ahead in ministry. So the next big step for us is seeing if we can launch this Christian school. So that's our desire. That's our heart. We think it'll be really good for Estacada. So again, thank you for your support.
Thank you. Um, does the staff have any additional comments in response to the public testimony?
No, not at this time. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Dodger, or go ahead.
Uh, Councilor Ten Bush, I have a few comments I'd like to make, but it would probably be better for the citizen comments at the end regarding SDCs and how that impacts us.
Okay.
So if I could come back up at the very end, is that okay?
Yeah, I'll set your form aside and remember, try to remember to bring you back up.
Thank you.
Okay, um, at this time, I will close the public hearing. I will reopen the Estacada City Council meeting and ask for a motion to approve or deny the ordinance.
I move to approve ordinance 2025 dash 10, amending Title 16, Development of the Estacada Municipal Code, Amending NCR Zone.
All right. All right, got a first and a second. Uh, Sadie, can we get a roll, although, um, well, first, is there any discussion? All right, all right, got a first and a second. Sadie, can we get a roll call though? Well, first, is there any discussion? No? Okay, Sadie, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Blevins?
Yes.
Counselor Dozel?
Yes.
Counselor Hill?
Yes.
Counselor McElroy?
Yes.
Counselor Metcalf?
Yes.
Counselor Ten Bush?
Yes. All right, thank you. Okay. We will consider the ordinance for the second time at the next city council meeting. Okay, my first public hearing, got it out of the way. Moving on to council business. Item A, recommendation of award for water treatment plant update engineering. That would be Alan.
Actually, we're going to ask Kurt and Ed to come on up to the table here, the microphone. So a request for proposals was advertised for an engineering firm to provide services for the design, engineering and permitting of the update to the our current water treatment plant. We received two proposals and they were evaluated by a review committee. The committee unanimously agreed to recommend Curran MacLeod as the preferred firm. And council is requested to approve that recommendation and direct staff to enter the contract negotiations with Curran MacLeod. If a contract is successfully negotiated, it will be presented to the council at the January twelfth council meeting for you say review the contract and then the approval. That will include the scope of work and everything, but Ed and Kurt are here tonight because this is a big project. They'll explain the details of it, but we'd like to do some early procurement so that we, it's really critical that we get this project moving forward and do the updates to the water plant at this time next year during when we're kind of going around the winter corner before we hit back into the higher water usage month. So they're here to speak to you if you have any questions. That'd be great.
Okay, can you all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Usually that's the way it works. My name is Edward Hodges and I'm president of Curran MacLeod. With me, as some of you may have met before, is the senior partner of the firm, Kurt MacLeod. And we are obviously very excited to be here tonight. If you could indulge in me in a little bit, I'm sure you may have questions about this project. It's very significant for the city. I wanted to just briefly go from, talk about where you are now, where we would like you to go with your water treatment plant and how we would see the process to achieve that, how to see it occurring. And then also briefly at the end, talk about what the probable cost may be for this project. So where you are now is your plant was built in nineteen fifty five. You've had an upgrade or in two thousand, you had another upgrade recently and you essentially have a number of four of systems, four sand filter systems that while being a great technology in its time, are no longer really functional. You also have a system called a plate settler settler system in the that combines to help purify water before it comes into those filters. That system is difficult to work with and is not really helping your treatment systems function well. At this time, as a result of this, your plant costs a lot to run, requires a lot of manpower and only produces a little more than half of its capacity. At the same time, while you have this going on, you also have some of the most significant growth that I've seen in thirty years of doing public sector engineering. And in looking at the trends of water use in your city, within two years, you're no longer to be going to be able to meet the maximum amount of water you need in the summer months. So that's where you are now. What we would like to do to correct this situation is we would like to build a new treatment technology inside of your plant. And the good news about your system and your plant is, and there's a lot of it, is that you have an outstanding source. It's always there. You don't have to worry about it. You have a site that has a lot of space to work on, even though it doesn't look it when you go down there. But from our view, it has significant areas where you can move things around. And you also have a superb treatment plant building that it's a little bit beat up on its metal siding on the outsides, but inside is significant structure. It has a ton of space to work in. And so what we can do is we can bring in a new technology, which it's somewhat similar to what you're seeing in your wastewater treatment plant now. It's a micro filtration or ultra filtration technology. And it's very simple to use. It has been around a long time. I've worked with it for twenty years. And essentially what you will do is going from your where you are now with this expensive plant that's hard to work, requires a lot of labor to a plant that runs very effectively with less cost and with significantly less manpower. This technology, micro filtration, essentially it's 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 a little bit different than the wastewater technology that you're putting in and that it's just when you go into the plant, you will see racks of tubes that go up. Inside of those tubes are small filaments with which in turn have very small holes in them. Dirty water comes in under pressure, it squeezes through those holes. Dirt, viruses, other components that shouldn't be in your drinking water are knocked out. Those the those filter elements are cleaned periodically. And then the the plant can just produce a super high quality water under almost all circumstances. Right now, if you have turbidity events in the winter or in the spring, your filters have to shut down for periods of days. Your your your, the primary filtration unit is a N T U. You tend to get ordinary water will be between point five up to one N T U or less. In the winter, your your turbidity goes up to a hundred or more during the storm events. These elements can actually, if required, be run during those events. Right now, you can't do anything with your filters. The micro filtration system, if water was necessary, can continuously produce. Most likely, you won't have to do that. You have lots of storage, they'll shut down. But my point is, is that these are are very robust and it's a well-proven technology. And it's just going to make the life of your plant, you know, plant operators and for the city so much more simple. So that's where you are now. That's where we would like to go for your system. And how we would like to do that, we, it's a process where we need to get this done in a short timeframe. We also need to do it and keep your plant running at the same time. However, again, you have a plant that to me is, and I've been doing this a long time, it's it's just it's really wonderful. It is so large. And when I walked in there, I it was just, it was one of the better days of my engineering career. What we will be able to do is essentially we're just going to move out some of the equipment, primarily what are called the plate settlers that take up a large part of your plant. We're going to pull them out. We're going to continue to run your filters. And then we're going to replace the area or put in the area where the plate settlers were. We're going to put these membranes and then start them up and get them going. After that, we'll just remove everything else from your plant. There's a number of other upgrades to the plant that we'll do. You've got some storage tanks down there that are currently used for administering what we call C T or contact time. So your water is properly disinfected as it comes out of the plant. We are going to take one of the tanks and utilize it as part of the new micro filtration system. Essentially, we're going to pump raw water up into it. And then that raw water flows into these units where it's pumped through and filtered, the new micro filtration units. The other tank you have is an old C T tank. It's approximately a hundred fifty thousand gallons. It's long past its useful life. We're going to replace that tank as part of the system upgrade. So where we would see this process going and how long we would see it taking would be approximately two years, the timeframe that we have. There's a number of factors as well as just dealing with doing this as quickly as we have or have to do it that come into play. And the main one is as you can imagine, and this was seen a lot during COVID, is the time to get many of the elements that are required in this plant procurement time. One of the principal ones is to get these membranes takes about a year. So the first thing we're going to do, we we've already done some preliminary design in this plant. But we are now at a point where we are going to actually request the city to go out for an R F P, a request proposals for the different types of membrane. And then we are going to select them on the basis of what you folks need to run your water plant and purchase them ahead of time. That's that's one of the first elements that will be done. So that where we would see this schedule being is that by this time next year or in early twenty twenty seven, the city will have these elements on hand. And then they can, we can start this process of moving parts out and moving them in as quickly as possible. There are a couple of other components too, anything to do with electrical in these systems, particularly what are called motor control centers, M C Cs. Those can take a long time as well to get. We're going to try and procure those ahead of time as well. And with this, you know, fast forward procurement, we should be able to have this plant completed on a two-year timeframe. While you're waiting for these micro filtration elements to occur, we're going to do the design, the primary design of pulling the plant apart and then putting it back together. One of the big components of it is actually the demolition schedule, going through and picking out all the parts and pieces that need to be removed, how to take them out in orderly ways that the plant is maintained, and then how to make other systems compatible so we can bring in the new micro filtration units. So our design process will probably will take us into the summer and next fall. You know, again, this would be demolition, new equipment, work on the site. We're also going to, just about every aspect of your water plant, we're going to touch. Controls, how to run the water plant, we're going to completely change those out. The way you filter your system, you have water that comes out of the micro filtration elements or excuse me, the existing filter now, and it's pumped into a settling pond, that pond needs to be redone. Every aspect of the system will be refurbished during this period. But it will be done in a sequence where we keep your plant running. We get the new micro filtration, micro filtration elements in, and then we can move forward with starting the plant and bringing it online. So we again are seeing this, we have, and I had provided you with a significant amount of information, which is useful if you want to look through this project. It's also very helpful with insomnia. And our schedule is, as you can see, it starts with this process of award tonight. And then we're looking at terminating it in the summer of twenty twenty seven. So that's, that's how we would like to see the project. That's, I know this is a very high overview, high level view. But we're really excited to move forward with it.
The membranes, how many vendors are there available for accessing the membranes?
There are now quite a few. When I started working with these membranes about almost twenty years ago, there were two membranes. One was called Mempor. Memcor is a company called U S Filter. They are still around. They've changed names many times. The other one was named Paul. And they are also around as well. They're really the standard of the industry. Now there are at least a dozen vendors of these different membrane types. And one thing that we've already started with the city is we've been going around and looking at other membrane plants. And, you know, we've, we've looked at actually at least two different types of membranes. We're going to incorporate it probably two or three more. We'll probably see five different types of membranes, different types of plant setups. And you really, you just, I can't emphasize enough how useful this process is. You go into these plants, you work with the operators. And you learn so much about what is good and what is not. What we are seeing though consistently, I've now been, I think we've been to three plants in this local area is when you talk to the operators, well, they all look at your operator, Chris, and his staff, and they say, your life is just going to change. You'll have a normal life. We hardly come in here. You know, we just turn on these membranes and run them. And it's, it's just a completely different scenario than what the city has now. But yes, there are a number of memories to answer your question.
Are any of them manufactured domestically?
That is a really good question. Yes, some of them are, the best ones are from abroad. They're from Japan. Tori is one of the membranes. And then the other one is the Aramid membrane that's used by Paul. And those are the standard of the industry. They're U S Filter or Memcor as it is. I think those are also, they're produced in Australia, so the majority of them are from outside the country.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Melissa.
So with these membranes and we're purchasing them ahead of time, right? Are they compatible with, do you have to go with their model, their design, or are, can you mix and match? Like you buy a piece, like you get a car, right?
Yeah.
Okay, you order from Japan.
Yes.
That membrane updates itself some way, shape or form, and they don't make that anymore. Is there anything that you've ever seen like that happen if you buy ahead of time and then all of a sudden it's just not available anymore?
Yes and no. You, it used to be when the membrane system started is the vendor of a specific type of membrane would would supply the whole package, the pumps, everything, the controls, everything that comes with it. Now there's a system, you have two systems that that is still in place of a dedicated system produced by, you know, everything's produced by one vendor. The second is called open source, and that's where a company will build a platform, they will supply everything. But then the different membrane membrane suppliers will come in and test their equipment and you'll select the one that you think is the preferable one.
Anybody else?
What's the lead time on the membranes?
It's that, as I've stated at the beginning, it's, it's around, because you have to assemble them, it's, it's close to a year. That's why we need to get ahead of it. No, 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 that's, I'm going through a lot of information. Now, the one thing I, the fourth point that I talked about that I was going to tell you and I haven't gotten to yet is if you read our report, the master plan completed last year, we were estimating this project to cost about ten million dollars. I'm not going to guarantee that, but gosh, I'm really hoping, you know, we're just going to work as hard as we can to keep away from projects, you know, keep this becoming a project where we come back with just a completely different number and not in the right way. So we're hoping to stay within that range. I'm not going to make a guarantee right now. But that is foremost in our mind. And we are looking at, you know, we're looking at the industry, other projects that are going on, the types of cost escalations that occur between preliminary design and then when they're fully constructed. And is our utmost goal to avoid that if possible.
John, Matt, no, go ahead, Mike.
How many are we going to keep on hand? Do they ever have failures? Like if we have three of them that we need, do we have a couple on hand for when one goes out or what's the lifespan of the membranes and?
You know, we will, you will have, the way we're going to design the system is we're going to have, you, you call, as I had said earlier, you have these membranes set up vertically, you have a metal rack that holds them. And so the common industry terminology is racks. And we're going to have three racks for redundancy. So right now, your maximum amount of water you can pull out of the river is two point six million gallons a day. You're going to have three racks with approximately one point three million gallons a day capacity. So you can go one point three, two point six. If something breaks, you've got another one point three to help you go. You're going to have significant excess capacity. Long answer to your short question. What I'm seeing in some of these plants, and in particular with one manufacturer, but but other ones are pretty good too. I just, we visited the Saint Helens, City of Saint Helens Water Plant. And they, it was built in the aughts. It's eighteen years old. The membrane that they have installed was rated for only ten years' use. The membrane that they have installed was rated for only ten years' use. They're just starting to replace them. The, the number of memory, and, and I'm seeing this consistently with other plants too. The, the loss of integrity in the, in the, in these membranes as you go through the little skinny fibers in the tube. It's, you have to do a, a procedure called pinning. Essentially, you just see air bubbling out of you, the little glass that you look at. You also have lots of other indicators, pressure in the system and the like starts to increase or, or, you know, change. And you know you have a problem. But essentially what people are doing is they're, they're going years and they're pinning maybe one or two out of a hundred thousand or so, you know, uh, small membranes, these, it's really astounding how resilient this technology is.
Thank you.
Is anybody else? Go ahead, John.
What impact are, are tariffs going to have with procurement? And I don't even know what's going on with tariffs anymore, but in the, in the categories that you would be pursuing, have they been stable? The tariffs?
We just purchased. Yeah. We just purchased membranes from Kubota, another, what you're using for your wastewater plant. And we were impacted by tariffs on that. The contract was a million two, I think, and the tariffs we're only going to, we end up paying about five thousand dollars is all. So I think it's just a minor component of the assembly. So the assembly would come domestically, but the filters would be imported, I think. So, and I'm hoping that the tariff situation gets resolved, you know, before we purchase. We're going to purchase in two months, we'll be back to you to purchase. We'll see how the tariff situation evolves.
I wondered if you could talk a little bit about, like our, our wastewater plant, where we went with the alternate process with the CMGC. But this will be design, bid, build, correct? Is that?
Yes. Yeah, that is correct.
So they'll fully design the, design, it'll go out to bid and then the little bid contractor will be the builder.
And our opinion is that, you know, these different processes have, each one of them has a good, you know, is a good use in a certain place. We are old school, and I know for me, I really like design, bid, build, because if we do our job right, you have the power of competition when it matters. When it comes to that bid, you have ten people bidding on it instead of one party. And so that's, that's how we are, we are proposing to do this project. And we think it's a successful model.
It's a lot simpler of a project, more straightforward than the wastewater facility, so we're looking forward to that.
Anybody else have anything for that? Okay, with that, yeah, I need a, I would like a motion. The motion is on page ninety-two in the packet.
I move to approve the recommendation of the review committee and authorize staff to proceed with contract negotiations with Curran McLeod Inc.
A second, second. Uh, any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. All right, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I can make one more point, I've been doing this sort of work for thirty years. I started out in northern New England, where I'm from. I really, I grew up in a rural community. I like rural communities. It is a, just a tremendous privilege to be here, to serve your town, to get this job. It is, for me, it's one of the best achievements of my career, or that's what I'm looking to see. So thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, looks like we're moving on to item B, the PFAS settlement update.
Turn that over to Laura.
Yes.
Give you an update on our, like we like to call it PFAS.
PFAS, thank you, Chair Ten Bush, City Councilors, this is actually a very appropriately timed after your water, water project update. So this is a litigation, a nationwide litigation that has to do with public drinking water systems. I found out a few weeks ago, the city investigated, has been included in the settlement class for this litigation. So it is on your agenda, just in case we needed to ask you for action before the next deadline coming up. I confirmed probably an hour before the meeting that no action is needed, so this is a pure update. But it's most likely I'll be coming to you and your staff will be coming to you for action in the early part of next year. So I just want to make sure that the council is aware of the litigation and where it is at. So like Melanie said, PFAS settlement is what I'm calling it. I'm not going to offend any chemists in the room by trying to pronounce what PFAS actually stands for. But it's basically a, a class or a category of thousands of different chemicals. One of the more common ones is probably people are more familiar with, Teflon is a PFAS chemical that's more commonly used in cookware. But they are, they have thousands of uses. They've been produced by a handful of companies. Some of the major ones are DuPont and 3M, and these are among four chemical companies that were sued in a nationwide class action lawsuit on behalf of public drinking water systems. The class action is in the District Court for South Carolina. And basically, the plaintiff class is all public drinking water systems. There is a couple of different settlement stages. Right now, we're in phase two. And phase two does require action if, for public drinking water systems that remain in the settlement class. Some opted out for various reasons. But if, if they weren't opted out, then they are considered in, which is where the city investigated at. So the next kind of action item would be, well, I should say the result of the settlement is in phase two, doing some testing of your drinking water system will put you in line for the next five years to be able to file a claim if, if PFAS is found in your drinking water source. That's kind of a summary of, of, of what the settlement means. There's a factor, there is a, a schedule of settlement, settlement remedies and in terms of monetary amounts that would result from the testing. So just want to make sure the city is in a good position to be able to file a claim and has the authority from the city council to file a claim if and when you want to do that, and that will likely be early next year. Do you have any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, we are now at the scoring rubric for safety or street safety prioritization. And I just have a question, was this, is this one you created?
No, the city shared it with me and I want to give my feedback on the things I'd like to see changed and stuff like that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'll hand it over to you, Councilor McElroy, if you want to, at the joint meeting, joint workshop with the City Council on Traffic and Public Safety, it was recommended there'd be a, a rubric for prioritizing. We tried to come up with one, this is our first stab at it, Councilor McElroy weighed in. And so if you, we also get, I provided some examples of how it might, I did that after the fact, it's not in your packet, but how it might filter out based on different projects that we've just now done. But the idea is to be able to have a kind of a standard rather than just guessing what should, what should come first. So I'll turn it over to you, Councilor McElroy.
Yeah, one of the big things that I, the rubric originally gave points based on the cost of the project, and I didn't think that that should be part of the decision-making process. I think that we could categorize projects into different ranges. There was three different ranges for the scoring. I believe it was zero to ten thousand, ten to twenty and greater than twenty thousand. Was that the three categories it was?
Something like that, yeah.
We don't necessarily need to have three categories, but the way that that was set up, it would have skewed the lower cost projects and always put those to the top. If they were similar in scores, you'd always have the, the cheaper projects at the top of it. And so I just think we should categorize the projects into zero to ten, ten to twenty and over greater than twenty thousand, and then assign budget spending to those different groups. And then they would have their ranking within the, in the groups so that we can knock out five projects under ten grand. We'd knock out, you know, two projects from ten to twenty grand, and then one of the bigger ticket items. Otherwise, the bigger ticket items are always just going to get kicked down the road. And so finding a way that works, I don't care if it's two or three different categories for the, for the cost part of it, but I didn't think that that should have been part of the scoring for the, for the safety aspect of it. And I think that the way that the city staff came up with the scoring for the different things, I didn't really have a disagreement on most of it. I think it works well. I really want to see what everyone thinks about this rubric being applied, because I don't, I don't want to bring a rubric and make it a rule without seeing it applied and everyone understand what the outcomes of that rubric are on like recently, projects that we recently looked at and tried to deal with that are being corrected now, so. You can use this and score and see how it would apply to the recent project, so.
Go ahead, John.
So on the Safe Roads section, question two or item two, did the speed study identify speeding of over three miles per hour in the eighty-five percentile? And I thought I remembered in the hill, hillway data, I think the eighty-fifth percentile number was below the speed limit. But if you took a look at the actual people going over the speed limit, eighty percent of the drivers were actually going over the speed limit. It's just the average eighty-fifth percentile somehow ended up being lower. And I remember there were literally, I think there was literally hundreds of individual drivers that were speeding, and there were some very high numbers of, of people going five miles over the limit, and then also going ten miles over the limit. I don't remember the data now. But where I'm going is, you know, this specifically says, identify speeding of over three miles per hour in the eighty-five, eighty-fifth percentile. You know, is there room or, or a way to, to add, you know, if you've got a significant number of people that are going way over the limit, you know, does that change the, the score for that particular road? Something like that. And again, it was the hillway data that specifically that, that I'm, I'm thinking of.
Let me try and pull that information up, because eighty-fifth percentile should be, like.
If you take a data set and you put a thousand, say there's a hundred, a hundred data points and you put it in, in order from lowest to highest.
Yeah.
The eighty-fifth percentile is exactly that, the eighty-five, every, everything, that means that eighty-five percent of the drivers were below that.
No, I, I get all of that. It's just that there was such a quantity of, of traffic that the actual number of people that were speeding was, was very, very high. And maybe it wasn't, you know, actually what it was, thinking back is it was broke out by hour. And it was eighty percent of the hours had a speeder in it. It wasn't eighty percent of the drivers were speeding. It was eighty percent of the hours had speeders in it. And in that range, again, like you said, you listed high to low. I think the highest was like fifty-three miles an hour or something like that. There were a significant number that were doing more than five miles over the limit and a, a smaller number, but still a significant number doing ten miles per hour over the limit. And so again, all I'm, all I'm going at is, so the eighty-fifth percentile speed on hillway was good. It was, it was below the limit, and so wouldn't hit a mark here. But there was, there was, I don't remember now, but say fifty drivers that were going at least five mile, I think the number was actually higher than that, at least going five miles over the limit or greater. And so having that component as, as something for this rubric.
Um, go ahead, Matt.
Sorry. In the, in that same section, at the bottom of that, it says, how many traffic accidents has occurred in the past five years? I read something a while back from ODOT about two twenty-four and the crosswalks, and how they said that putting crosswalks in, it makes it more dangerous. I was a union carpenter for over a dozen years, and one of the things that were taken very, very, it's very important, we're called near misses. If nobody got hurt in the incident, somebody almost got hit by a forklift, something almost fell on them or whatever. Things started changing because of near misses. And that was great. It got safer. We, we hear about near misses all the time around here, but there's no way of actually documenting that. And I, I, this isn't necessarily saying that, but I think that if we have the opportunity to put something in place that would prevent or close to eliminating the possibility of an event happening, if we know that the event is a possibility, taking sixth and what cemetery over there, right? Like we know that that's dangerous, and there have been accidents, and we had countless opportunities to fix that, and we haven't, right? And then we have things all around town. So I'd like, I don't know how we could set something up for near misses, but if stuff's brought up, if the community's bringing stuff up, I think those should be counted as something like a near miss, right? So if, if anyone comes in here and they're talking about, like, like surely it brought up, somebody almost got hit on Sixth and Broadway, that should be considered a near miss, and that I would say would constitute quote unquote a traffic accident incident. So maybe incidences of sorts should be on there, right? Like eyewitness report of something happening, I don't know where or how or whatever, but I, I in over a dozen years in the trades, near misses brought to the attention, created a lot of implementation of safety standards that have saved countless union members over the years, so.
Yeah, so we, I talked to Melanie before the meeting, and this document is going to continue to grow. It's going to continue to evolve.
Yes.
So, you know, I, I understand what you're saying. I, I really do, but just understand that this document is going to, it's going to come back to us, we're going to make changes. We're going to, you know, go through this. We don't like this, we do like this, we're going to change it, we're going to fix it, so. Yeah, I mean, I, but I do understand where you're coming from on that. Go ahead, John.
I think, first of all, Melanie, thank you for putting this together. This is, this is a very, very strong starting point, I feel like. To, I think what Councilman Levins is saying, a component I would like to see in this, I do like this. I agree with what Councilman Dola was saying about the eighty-fifth percentile. Just because a lot of these traffic studies, like in this packet right here, none of these got any assigned points for speeding, for the actual tangible speeding incident, right? So, but what I would like to see in this is maybe a component of this that assigns some sort of points for community outreach to what, to his point, community complaint driven or something. If you received, a, a working example in my mind would be like five members or three, three houses within the same block reported speeding or came into city council and said, hey, in front of our house or something like that. Then it's community involvement versus just, I am totally aware of the traffic studies, I'm not dismissing them. Please don't take my comments as that. But it's involving the community to police themselves as well and kind of address, like, yes, we agree, as we've talked about many times, the, sometimes the, the look, the aesthetic of speeding is not actually speeding. And then there is being aware of the design of the streets, you know, first flow-through versus residential or more private drive type stuff. Outside of the education campaigns with that, I would just like to see, is there a way to give the community member a voice in this rubrics, right? So three or more would be maybe one point, and then say it's five or more. Again, rough draft within a two-block radius or whatever, it could be a two-point system or something like that, that would slide the, I don't know if you want to go into safe roads or safe people, I don't know where we would put that. I would just like to see something that includes the community into the rubrics. I like this as a very strong start. I just don't know that the speed study part captures it because it's not changing complaints necessarily. But I do understand the ergonomics of data is data, and I'm not here to argue that. I'm just, if we could give the people a voice a little bit, assign some points to that. I think that covers both bases in this instance where we're looking at traffic studies, but we're also listening to the people that are living right there. Sorry.
I think that when people come.
I think that when people come in and are concerned about hazards in their neighborhoods, I think that's what motivates us to do this study. And then we take the data from the study and we have to come up with something. If you don't like the eighty fifth percentile, is it the ninetieth percentile? Is it the eighty seventh percentile? But we have to have something that we're measuring equally with everyone's concerns with. And if it's not data driven, then I don't know how we can make an argument that it's being fair. So if someone's has an unsafe intersection in their neighborhood, but they don't have four people to come in and complain about it. And then we, and that's slotted to be dealt with. And then a neighborhood comes in and several people come in and all of a sudden their project goes in front of them. What the rubric's going to do is it's going to make us make a list of the projects in order and we're going to have to prioritize them based on some sort of data points. I don't uh I think that the way that we can hear the community when they come in and they're concerned is to do the traffic study or take a look at whatever their issue is. But I think that the decision ultimately has to be data driven. Whatever data, whatever uh scores you want to use for what you consider to make. Like maybe it's not three miles per hour over the eighty fifth percentile, maybe it's three miles per hour over the ninetieth percentile, but there's always going to be people that are going to be speeding. There's a certain number, no matter where you do it, no matter what you do, no matter how many traffic control devices you have, they're going to be speeding through that neighborhood. No matter what, no matter what you do. So what's the acceptable number? And it seems like in all the speed studies that I checked out. The eighty fifth percentile was just kind of an accepted number across the industry because that means that eighty five percent of the people that are going down, the overwhelming majority of the people going down that road, that's the way they're traveling it. So I just, I really like the idea of being able to evaluate things based on data and looking forward to seeing how that plays out. Going to have some tough decisions when you have these, however many lists that we come up with. When you're, when you have a new project come in and you have to decide where it goes on the list, it's a finite thing. I think it's going to really make you think a little bit more about what's coming up. I'm excited about it.
Anybody else have anything?
No, I just think this is going to be good to discuss and it's going to probably take a little while, so.
Do you need anything from us on this?
I'll just kind of summarize it. So I think I'll bring it back. Um, and if there's a different format, this is just kind of the first first um format that I put together so we could do a different format if you want, but I'm hearing that may possible um additional points if there's excessive speeders, like if there's different percentiles here, but there's um the people that are exceeding that are extremely exceeding that, that should be elevated. And any points for near misses that we can identify, I agree with that. The near miss they found. Uh, they should count because just because it didn't actually happen, still got to make an adjustment. Um, and then somehow, I think, I think you're right, the, the community complaint is what's driving this um process to happen. Um, and so, you know, I mean, I think you can take that into consideration, but if I try to add those other things in and bring it back, talk about it again.
Yeah, yeah, so it would be cool or it'd be nice if some, like we got something like this brought to our attention and then you know, like either below total points or something like that, community comments, community reports, community complaints. And it would behoove the community to note time and you know, time of day, maybe weather, stuff like that, exact location, because can't just say six is dangerous. That wouldn't give us any help. So any additional help, maybe maybe, I don't know, to keep it simple, throw something on there like just write that in under there like, like street cross, cross section and time of day and weather.
We could also probably, I'm not sure, I'd have to talk with chief, but and deputy in the back might know, but um, if there's like, do they, if there's a report written for what would maybe be a near miss, I'm not sure if that would happen or not.
Oh, like a police report written out? Oh, that would be probably.
Check like if there's.
Good additionals.
Any police concerns, yeah, to make note of, okay.
The more information we have to go on, the better decision we can make.
All right.
All right, uh, going to move on to the second consideration of ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero one two and ordinance amending chapter three point three eight transient lodging tax of the Esticated Municipal Code. Um, we've already gone over this. Um. Uh, does anybody want to have discussion on?
Yeah. When we went through this, wasn't this where we were going to have the state do the collection for us? So I don't remember getting this detail. Um, I'm not to say that, you know, because they print out the packet for me, it's not to say it wasn't in the packet. I just don't remember seeing it. Um, because I have a couple of questions about some of the content uh in here in this.
Okay, um, let me get down to that section.
And so it's um uh, three point thirty eight point zero seven zero, item C and item E.
A lot of this change was made to comply with the to comply with what the state needed. Zero, okay, what was it? Point uh three point three eight point zero seven zero.
Correct. Item C and item E.
Okay, so C is staying the same, a dwelling, the dwelling unit, the consideration for which is funded through a contract with a government agency and the purpose of which is to provide emergency or temporary shelter. There's no T L T on that. So if there was, say, we had a evacuation and we had to.
Right.
Have, yeah, so we.
I, I get that part. My question is, um, you know, I, the right emergency or temporary. And uh temporary, isn't that the definition of a transient? Um, and so what I was thinking of is where the, the state or the county are, are sending people into our community and and putting them up somewhere. Um. And and not having any recourse to that from a tax standpoint versus dropping the word temporary and just keeping the, the word emergency. So it's, it's uh to provide emergency shelter, um, but not provide emergency or temporary. And the second thing um is on item uh E uh, where a dwelling unit that is used by members of the general public for temporary human occupancy for fewer than thirty days per year, first thing I thought of was squatters. Um, the way this is worded, um. Because I don't know how big of it that uh squatters are in Oregon, but uh I know that they have been, uh, it has been a big issue in in other, other places. And so is this saying that if, if uh if, if some squatters move into a uh, I just.
There'd be no um.
Tax charged.
There'd be no chart, yeah, there'd be no tax.
I think this list is just saying that these are the situations where they're not going to charge the transient lodging.
No, I get that part. And so.
Are you just saying that you want to tax them?
Well, it's, it's actually in a way is, is, look, you're, you're living here and it is temporary housing. So you're subject to tax. If you don't pay the tax, out you go. Um, so almost as a, as a uh method to.
I think what, I think what it's talking about is if you have like a guest house or something and for like a couple of weeks you rent it out to somebody who's coming to visit their foreign exchange student, I'm just making this up. Um, that they don't have to sign up to pay a T L T because they're doing it once a year. It's less than thirty days. So they're not going to have to, they are making a profit on that. Um, but they're not going to have to pay the T L T because it's not something they're doing on an ongoing basis. Is that how you interpret that, Sadie? Yeah. So it's not, it's not like a squatter because a squatter wouldn't be paying anything. Um, it's for somebody who has a place that they rent out, but it's just a minimal, it's less than a month out of the year and we're not going to try to track that down.
Like an Airbnb type of thing where you don't, you're just there for a few weeks?
No, if it was Airbnb and they're like doing that throughout the year.
To that effect.
Right. If it was something like you could do an Airbnb, but you don't, you just have like, my brother-in-law lives in the next state or when they come and stay, they stay in my guest house and it's free. Um, but once in a while I might rent it out. Then we're not going to tr- track them down and get them to sign up to pay the T L T. That make sense?
I mean, I, I feel like I'm cutting in the weeds on this, but um, but that's, that's what popped in my head and so um, especially on E uh.
I could maybe help out, um, councillor Dolezal. Um, so the transient lodging taxes existing in statute. It's something that the state uh imposes, I think it's one point five percent and you have your own local tax that you're adding on top of that. These amendments are primarily, like Melanie said, to allow for uh the I G A to have D O R implemented and, and sorry, administrative on behalf of the city. All of these exemptions are the ones that are existing in statute, the exact language. Um, so that probably is a requirement of entering into the I G A, I would imagine. These are ones that the state exempts specifically under O R S three twenty point three oh eight. Uh, which is a state um counterpart to the local T L T. Uh, for E, I would say this is directly a definition to distinguish from uh it, it's the definition of transient uh lodging or temporary lodging thirty, well, fewer than thirty days. Does that help?
I'm good.
Okay.
Anybody else? Uh, can I get a motion?
I move to approve ordinance two zero two five dash zero one two to amend chapter three point three eight transient lodging tax of the Esticated Municipal Code.
A second.
I've got a motion in a second. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, now we're on to the item that we pulled out of the consent agenda. Uh, resolution twenty twenty five dash zero two five, a resol- a resolution adopting an invocation policy for city council meetings.
Right, and at the request of city council, um, city attorney Westmeyer drafted an invocation policy for opening city council meetings. There's a resolution and then there is a policy attached. Um, so I will, she's available to discuss that with you if you have questions.
Yeah, so I um, I, I thought it was, it was uh, uh, clear, it was comprehensive. Um, I had uh one question and then I had three uh items, two I'd like to see struck. Um, and then the other, I just, an explanation of why it's there, not in a bad way, but just um, and I'll just go through all of them and then, and then we can address them uh as a group in uh uh, item six, uh, number A. Um. Uh, issue number one or uh point one, uh, you know, goes through everything, uh, but when we get to the stay in the room. Um. My, my thought was, um, you know, there is no clearer statement of disagreement than standing up and walking out. And I thought if someone so badly didn't want to see somebody given invocation, then just wait because it's at the beginning of the meeting. Instead of uh having them stand up and, and walk out and, and basically make a production out of, out of everything. So I'd like to see stay in the room struck. Um, the second uh item is actually number two. And when I read that, I thought I was reading number one because it was, it was, it completely overlapped. Uh, it, it seemed to me to completely overlap, meaning that it was, it was redundant in that no member or, you know, number one starts, no person, including any member of the city council, city staff, all that stuff. And then that's how number two starts. And I didn't see anything in addition, uh, item two that wasn't covered in item one, so why not strike the, that? And then the third thing was um is uh, item E, uh, number five. Um, invocations may be given virtually and I would like to see that struck. Um, and what I was thinking was, um, you know, the purpose in part is to lend gravity uh to the to the session and to solemnize the proceedings, you know, and that's not done watching TV. Um, and then section two D says if a volunteer is unable to attend blah, 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 uh, moment of silence. Um, meaning that the, if the volunteer wasn't able to attend, then we would just defer to a moment of silence. And that to me implied that it was in person. Um, and, and then finally, uh I think that having uh, having the invocation done in person is going to help uh ensure positivity. Um, meaning that uh, things seem to go sideways when it's, what's virtual or, or text or whatever. Uh, versus uh, people tend to mind their manners when they're standing in front of you and uh so um willing it just tied in with behaviors online versus in person, there's a difference. And so those were the three things, uh, striking the, the um, stay in the room. Striking the given virtually and then just what's up with uh, number two. So there you go. I'm done.
Well, I'd be happy to respond to that. Uh, councillor Dolezal, I'll start from the reverse. So invocations may be given virtually. This is not any, I have no legal uh comment or opinion about that. This was not something that we discussed, so it's, uh, this is your policy if you want to change that and have discussion tonight uh to make that change to, to allow only live in person. Uh, invocations, we, we'd be happy to make that change and you can still take action tonight to approve as amended. Um, so I'll leave that for your discussion after either now or I can go over your next points first.
I'm good with it, requiring them to be in person.
Are we tackling his right now and then?
I think that makes sense.
Okay, I, I'm good with it too. I think it should be in person.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll make that change. Okay, then going up the line, councillor Dolezal again on your comment to well, in regard to uh Roman numeral six, A, one and two, if there's redundancy there. It, it, um, perhaps it could be worded a little bit clearer. The, the first was intended to uh, confirm that no person in attendance will be required to participate or be pressured to participate. The second is uh prohibiting anybody from actually doing the uh pressuring or the requiring. So there's a slight distinction even though the wording is identical. Does that make sense?
So it's basically, it's basically letting them know that we're not making.
Yes, that's what, that's the point of number one. And number two is to, as a reminder, um for no, for no one who is an official city position or appearing to be an official city position to um do any coercing or pressuring.
If, and either way, for me, on, on whether two should, the section two should be struck. But if it stays, then there's also that stay in the room component to that one also, then I would like that one to be struck.
I don't believe we can require anybody to stay in the room.
I think that's kidnapping. If somebody wants to leave and you don't let them leave, I think that's like, probably not a legal thing you can do.
Yeah, we can't, we can't require them to stay in the room.
You know, I get that part. Um, and so then can we have, and I don't know how this, what this looks like, but then because it's at the beginning of the meeting, if someone feels so strongly about this particular invocation. Wait, um, and, and come in after, um, but don't get up in the middle and leave. Um, is there a way, I understand what you're saying though, so is there a way to word that? And what I'm, and again, it has to do with just you know, the, the statement of, of, and I'm embellishing now, but huff and puff and stand up and go charging out the door. Because I don't like the Church of Rigatoni, you know, giving us invocation on whatever. Um, and so writing it so that we can um.
I, I think we could give people the opportunity to leave by just announcing that we're about to have the moment. And let people know if you don't want to be a part of it, that you're welcome. If you're going to step outside, please step outside now so that you're not distracting from when the prayer is happening. I think that opportunity would be perfectly fair, but I mean, what's the enforcement actually? We say, oh, you can't leave. Who's going to enforce that? You know what I mean? So I, I think it'd be better to just say, hey, if you, if you don't want to participate or it's not something you want to hear, uh, you have the opportunity now to go ahead and leave the room, we'll be done here in just a minute.
So in that, and I'm tracking. And so then by not having that, how does that change that behavior? And I don't think it does. Um, and so just don't have that in the, in the um, policy.
I don't think having it or not having it is going to change that behavior.
That's what I mean. And so then why don't we take it out?
Could we maybe rephrase it to say be present in the room? Could we maybe rephrase it to say be present in the room, because I think it's important, I think it's important to acknowledge that if somebody doesn't wanna be present, like you said, they don't have to come in or they could step aside. I mean, I don't anticipate that to happen extremely often, but there might be some people that feel strongly, um, about not participating or, um, so maybe instead of the, um, such as any request or requirement to speak, bow your head, stand, um, be present in the room or close their eyes, maybe without, might say, cause it does sound like they're gonna get up and leave in the middle of it, but that's not the intent.
I think, I think what councillor McElroy was saying about, you know, making that announcement, you know, if, if you don't want to participate in this invocation, this is the time right now to stand up and, and walk out of the room. So I think, I think, you know, the, having that in there or having us, us say that, you know, it, we're not infringing on anybody's, on anybody's rights, you know, and I just think that if we, if we make that statement that, um, you know, before the invocation, then that, that gives everybody their opportunity. Uh, go ahead, Jonathan.
Is there a way to put context in there that talks about disruptive behavior? I mean, that's a, that's right in the middle there. Is there a way that we can? Cause I, I agree with what you're saying. Why do we need it if it doesn't change anything? I completely agree with you. I almost think that incentive, it's a carrot for somebody to look at this and go, ah, I don't have to, and this is a chance for me to, not that we're trying to infringe anybody's rights to protest, but this is a way for me to be disruptive, right? But then on the other side of this, I completely agree, we're not allowed to kidnap people and tell them, you can't leave. What are we gonna do if they get up? We're not gonna say anything to them, we're gonna let them walk out of the room, truthfully, right? So can we, can we add language in there that talks about, uh, disruptive, like disturbing the meeting and, and you're, in your way that you leave or disruptive behavior in general? I mean, is that a re- respectable behavior?
Yeah, I think the, um, statement of if, if you don't like what's come, whatever, if you don't like what's coming, now's the time to leave, I think that actually makes a bigger deal. Um, and then to Jonathan's point or councillor Metcalf's point, uh, you know, if someone does wanna make a, a scene, that's when they're gonna do it. And so, um, and again, this isn't like big giant deal or something like, I'm just trying to make it as, as smooth as possible. And so I, I still think, because people can get up and get out of the meeting whenever they want, um, no matter what. So I don't know that there's a, a reason for that particular, those particular words to, to be in there.
I think it's just saying that you can't ask them to do that. Like, you can't, as a city councillor, you can't ask them to stay in the room.
We don't, we can't do that now, we don't do that now.
Go ahead, Matthew.
I mean, I, I mean, in, in that case, we could also say, uh, you know, you don't have to bow your head. Some people look up, some people raise their hands, right? Like, we don't need to do that. I think that it's important that when the announcement of the invocation's being given, that we announce it and then give some sort of time, right? If anything, I'd say add some sort of, well, I mean, you can't really add anything. If somebody wants to make a scene, they're gonna make a scene. So I think it would just be the due diligence of the mayor or the, you know, sitting chair to give the time. Cause somebody's gonna start standing up when they want to leave. Give them time to leave the room and then we may begin, right? And that, I think that amount of time for whoever is giving the invocation to stand up, walk to the podium, sit down, get their Bible open or whatever notes and give the invocation would be plenty of time for anyone who doesn't wanna be here to stand up and leave. So I get all sides, but, uh, I think that is just to let them know, so they're aware of their rights, right? And, you know, if they wanna make a scene, they're gonna make a scene. So giving that few moments to allow those people their time to leave, I think would be based off of us or the mayor, whoever's. I don't know, that's my two cents.
Anybody else have anything?
Separate list. Uh, just one thing I saw in this, as I, I, I think this was the E was the only one I was, that really stood out to me. No individual may deliver more than two invocations per calendar year. I did, I know that we had talked about limiting how much somebody can speak. I, I do remember that, that it can't be a free for all where they can just sign up for every single one. But two seems a little restrictive to me. I think there's only so many people in town that are gonna participate in this anyway, so I think it will go to either a moment of silence or a council member or committee member or somebody, if, if that's what the, I'm just saying, I think that two is a little, a little ma- and I think we don't limit the people that are bold enough to. I'm not saying that they can have one every month, that's not what I'm saying, but I think two is too restrictive. I'd like to see that opened up a little bit.
So I, I, I understand that, um, just being, being, you know, one person that was on the ca- that was on the council when we had invocations last time, um, we, honestly, we had, w- there were like two, maybe three people in the, in that, that early period that I was on council that, that would come give the invocation. There wasn't very many people doing it, um, and it just, it was, it was, it was those three pe- those two or three people that were constantly in here and, um, y- you know, giving the putting a limit on how many times they can do it, it doesn't have to be two, but putting a limit on how many times per year, you know, maybe once per quarter. You know, type of thing, um, y- you know, that, that doubles the amount of times they can give the invocation, but it just, it, it, it doesn't saturate the, um, the, it doesn't saturate the city council meetings with the same two to three people that come in here, so.
Was there some negative feedback from the community or somebody saying like, hey, we don't wanna say, let's say, you know, Brett is the only one that puts in and he's the only one that comes up here, but he's the only one willing and ready to come up here.
Well, I don't remember, Melanie, was it, was our change to go to the moment of sil- silence, was that, uh, community, community driven or was that council driven? I don't remember.
I don't recall one hundred percent. I don't, I don't remember why we went there, other than it was an attempt to be inclusive to everybody to, you know, do what they wanna do in their own way.
With the inclusivity thing, it says in here, give a week's notice, right? So like, people have plenty of time to, you know, give their, you know, this is, I'd like to speak or whatever, so I don't, I, I don't really think it should be limited either. I mean, I mean, even if they wanna come in and just say the Lord's Prayer beforehand, I mean, I think that's perfectly acceptable.
I mean, you know, like I said, uh, my opinion is, you know, limited to, you know, once per quarter or, you know, whatever, but yeah, go ahead.
I, I like the idea of giving priority to someone that hasn't spoken two time, like if,
There you go.
If somebody, sorry, rather than it be, you speak twice and then you're done for the year and then we just have moments of silence rather than uh, invocation, if two people sign up and one person's already spoken twice, the priority is given to the, the person that hasn't spoken before or has only spoken once, and then just do it like that by prior, you know, prioritize them by who's spoken the most or whatever, and then deal with it that way. Otherwise, I, I think you will have a bunch of dead spots, it, cause I don't think there's gonna be, that would require twelve people to, twelve different people to be willing to come up here and do it. I don't think there's that many brave souls to do it.
And res- respectfully as well, uh, this council, we did decide this, and I know your decision's coming. And, and I, I do mean that very respectfully. I'm just saying, you did reference like where your frame of mind came from on this, if, if I recall correctly, it was where people were voting from the last council, but as a whole, like as a unit here, we respectfully, even with your differences, we agreed that this is kind of the direction we wanna drive this. So like, from your standpoint of this council, what, what would be, I guess, tolerable, not even tolerable, palatable, if I will, if that's a good word for this, right? What would be palatable to you that you think represents both the community and the council, right? Like that, would, you would say coincides with both, both, both strengths in this.
You know, like I said, at, at least to start, um, to start, you know, maybe limit it to once per quarter. You know, to, um, once per quarter, and then if we're not getting, if we're not getting response, you know, then we can come back and we can, we can adjust that limit. You know, we can adjust that limit. Um, go ahead, Matthew.
Um, so I got a bunch of stuff, so if we're gonna get stuck on one thing, can I go through all my stuff real quick?
Absolutely.
Address those, that way they're on the table. Um, so for scope, um, so this is all voluntary, right? So I would like to, you know, for scope, add committees to this. Um, I would like this to, for some reason, it says only applies to meetings of the Esticada City Council. I think it should be city council and committees. If they desire to hold a invocation before their meetings, they should have, I mean, I don't know if they're not allowed to, but if they're not allowed to, I think they should be allowed to.
Hey, could, could I just request that we don't make this an administrative, um, burden, if we're trying to, like, if staff is trying to coordinate, um, a, an invocation for every council meeting and every, um,
Well, that would be.
Committing meeting.
That would be up to the committee. I mean, if the, I mean, if the committee, could the committee do that? And just, we could even put that in there, I mean.
I think though that, that because it's an invocation and, you know, this policy's been to protect the city and so, uh, they have to, you know, go to the local paper of record and they have to do all these different things that they need to do so that they're, they're crossing Ts and dotting Is, is I think how that works and so.
Well, basically vetting our people that come in to do the prayer.
Well, you can't vet them, you don't even, you can't even look at what they say before they come in. And I like the two-minute thing, but like, you can't say what they can and cannot say, as long as they're being respectful and they're not diminishing any other faith. Um, so anyways, to continue on with that, um, number four in eligibility in speakers. So after doing some, you know, looking around research, there's some Supreme Court rulings and all that kinda stuff, um, apparently the council is allowed to give an invocation if no one is present. So that is also another possibility. No one's here to give an invocation. We don't necessarily have to do a moment of silence if one of the council members is willing to give an invocation in the invocation timeline. Um, if I'm, I'm not, I mean, I'm not mistaken on that one, council can still give an invocation, a council member, correct?
Uh, I would refer back to the memorandum, the legal memorandum I provided this council last meeting. Um, that is not consistent with the, um, Supreme Court cases.
Well, I was reading the Town of Greece in Galloway, two thousand fourteen Supreme Court ruling when it comes to open prayer and all that kinda stuff. And then kind of going into the details of it being broke down and I was looking around and apparently council is allowed to give an invocation if nobody's here to give an invocation. Um, but I'd like to know for sure, just throw that out there. Um, so I got that. And then E, section two, E, no individual may deliver more than two invocations per calendar year. I agree with Jonathan on that one, I don't think it should be limited to two, but I also agree with McElroy about that. If you've given two and there's somebody else who's putting in their, uh, request to put in for one, I think that they should be bumped to the top of the list and then so on, right? If you've given your two, but I don't think you should be limited to only two. It's like, you agree with that? Okay. And then for, yeah, and then as, as long as they are scheduling, as long as they are still going through the due diligence of scheduling and everything. And then I agree with, uh, Mister Dullesall about E five, I don't believe anything should be virtual, hundred percent in, in the council chambers. There we go, that, now we.
Um, just, uh, for clarity, um, on item B, uh, number four, but when it says, and other city officials, um, are committee members, city officials?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't, I, I would, I would like to see more evidence of that, because from what I was reading and going through this kinda stuff, it seems pretty unanimous across what I've been going through. Uh, that council members are authorized to give an invocation if nobody's come up, came up to, uh, give an invocation. And if nobody wanted to, obviously it would go back to this, uh, moment of silence, but.
So real quick, just to get something off the, get something out of the way. So do we all agree that invocations may be given virtually or in person should be scratched from the list?
I think in person, yes. I think that protects us. We dealt with some of that, even in the Hamas comments and.
In person, we, we all agree for that, so just to get that one out of the way and off the, off the, out of the discussion, cause I know Mike agreed with it too, so.
I- in the sake of making this question, sorry to interrupt, if I could. In the sake of making this, I'm, I'm keeping it within where it's amendable.
And I was thinking we're gonna have to bring it back.
That's what I'm like worried about here, i- is, are we still able to do that with the feedback you've received, do you think? Or is this gonna be something that you think needs to be brought back? Like realistically, are we gonna be able to do this with an amendment or do we need to go back, adjust it, bring it back and present again?
From everything that I've heard so far, we could do it with an amendment. I don't know, I, um, I don't have clarity right now with how many of these points you want to have brought back. So either through discussion or action tonight, we would need the same amount of comments.
I think we, I think we really need to, um, figure out the legality of a council, of a, of a council member, um, giving the invocation. I think we need, that, that's something that definitely would need to be brought back, um, the legality of that, because that's something that, you know, um, I think that, um,
But on that one, I have a councillor in the invocation. I know of other cities where councillors or the mayor does offer the invocation. I don't know if that is a low risk option. And that's what you're, I think, here to advise us for, is that a risk that could be challenged uh, if the council is offering the invocation.
And, and I don't like the idea of, uh, as Melanie said, making it a administrat- administration, um,
Burden.
Burden by having, uh, an invocation for every single one of our committee and commission meetings. Um, I just don't like the, I mean, the, our city staff, our city staff is, uh, overworked as it is. And, uh, just to add that to, um, add that burden of scheduling, and there's a lot of meetings. Um, scheduling and, and invocation for all of those meetings, I just think would be too burdensome for our staff. We'd almost have to hire somebody just to, you know, part-time, just to, just to schedule, um, invocations.
For eight meetings, a part-time employee, I, I don't know. I, I guess, does the staff, are the staff like scheduling this stuff? I mean, why can't someone just show up to a committee meeting and give the invocation?
I'm not, I'm not suggesting that, that the committee meetings be set up for that. What I'm suggesting is that they aren't stricken out of it. If they want to pursue it, I feel like they should have the opportunity to pursue it. I'm not suggesting that staff puts in the effort. I'm just, if, if one of the committee mem- committees, right, would like to say an indication prior to their committee, I just don't want them left out.
And they would all, they would vote, cause there's, they would vote whether they wanna have a.
I mean, they, I mean, they could vote or not vote or just not do it. It would be entirely voluntary. If they wanted to, then they could. If they don't want to, at least they have the option. You know, I'm, I, I don't, I just don't want them left out. But I also don't necessarily, I'm not saying that staff has to go find themselves, find somebody to give the invocation.
So we've set up a form, so we'd have it ready to go for you January first and do a public notice. And where people could go online and they could sign up for whichever week they're available, whoever wants to do it and, um, but then they have to sign up a week ahead of time so we can verify that they either live in the school district or they, um, are representative, I can't remember what the guidelines were. That they're like representative of our area, they're not just somebody from the outside area. Um, so there is, that would have to go, happen for any of the, um, commissions that want to do, to want to have invocation also. Which it seems like it's, it's a, it's a small thing, I'd probably take it on. I'm not gonna put that on other staff to try to organize the invocation, but otherwise, it's just kind of free for all if we don't have. But otherwise, it's just kind of free for all if we don't have, maintain the standards of the policy.
What, what, what was involved in that? Like you look up there, how do you?
Yeah, I mean, we probably, a lot of, most of them we probably know.
How do you physically do it though? Like what's the work process of it? I say I wanna speak and then I fill out a form and I send it to you. What do you do with the form?
It's all, it would be on the website and they would provide, oh gosh, I have to pull up the.
Cause if they don't give their address.
They provide their address and if their congregation or whoever is in this area, we just take them at their word for that. Um, is that right? Is that how it was going? Yep. And and then just for, so it's, it's a minimal amount of work. I would be happy to do it if you wanna do that. I just don't know that all of our commissions really want to do. So it probably wouldn't be very many. It might just be one commission that wants to have invocation.
I just would like them to have the opportu- I, I, yeah, I just, I should say city council and committees.
If so choose. If so choose, yeah.
Okay.
And are we clear now or do we still need more clarification?
On that, that's good, but we never came up with the E. What did you, what was everybody else's thoughts on the two? Invocations per calendar year. I do understand what you're saying about a start or maybe you said modifying that maybe to one per quarter. What about two a quarter? It's three months.
Provide maybe a little bit of background for how we came up with that proposal, that proposed number in the discussion with the council last meeting. Um, I think it was mentioned that at least that there are maybe a dozen or more potential congregations. Or or assemblies that might want to speak and provide an invocation. Uh, talking, talking with Melanie, we were calculating, you have about twenty-one meetings a year, I think. So that kind of results in about two per, if everybody known uh would want to do that. But if you wanted to do it one per quarter, um, we can change it to up to four. That would be one per quarter, one per quarter.
I don't think we should have a number on max amount of times someone can do it. I think if somebody has done it a certain number of times because nobody else has put in. If somebody else puts in, like McElroy said, he, that person should go to the top, like immediately to the top.
Yeah, I would say in terms of um. Uh, again, we didn't talk about these details at the council, so I'm really happy to get these comments and discussion. We prepared this policy based on the direction to uh propose a resolution and an invocation policy. That is consistent with the recommendations that I had provided in the legal memorandum and that's what we did here. Uh, with your staff, we made it the most self-implemented possible to create the least administrative burden on your staff. Um, so the way it's structured is people, well, I don't think the website is quite set up for this yet until you um choose to adopt the policy. But it will be, go on, plug in your own name, choose your own date, choose your own time, and we just sort of have the meetings there. So it just creates a little bit more to um. To now consider prioritization of who did, who didn't. Um, another piece to that, creating a limit. That was one of the guidelines uh that came from the legal case law. And the reason for that is because uh we don't want to unintentionally create a pattern. Or practice of only allowing one religion or one viewpoint, uh which may happen if you have a prioritization. And only one person is signing up, that may happen by.
But if only one person's signing up, the community's kind of doing that on their own. That's not us. That's their decision to not be, like, we're not intentionally making one person more. They're doing it. So that's not really on us. That's why I don't think we should limit that. And if they've done it more than twice, there should be priorities to those who have to put in later.
The, well, the legal case law on that is not just uh intentional, but it could be created through a pattern or practice that is allowed.
All right, John. Yeah, I, I actually support a, a, a limit, like once a quarter or something like that. And the reason being is that I'm not sure how popular, you know, maybe when it first starts, but how often um. People will want to to give some kind of invocation and it, if it reaches a point where we default, if no one's there, then this person will do it. And they do it all the time, then all of a sudden it's, well, I'm not gonna even try because this person does it all the time. And it, I'd be really interested to see what kind of variety uh of of people we get at our meetings to just.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is like, if you were to go twice and then put in for a third time, but you've already gone twice, Jonathan puts in, you know. He would get priority over you. You've already done it twice.
Yeah, but, but having some sort of limit still, um, like once a quarter is, I think, reasonable versus.
I could roll.
Free for all where they can just do it every single time that there's, if there's no one signs up.
Quarterly, I think I.
I, I think so too. That gives, that gives robust opportunity for a variety of people. And I, and I mean, I think also we can, you can look at this with discretion as these applications come in too. If Melanie happens to see or whoever ends up with this caseload happens to see. Pastor Brett Dodger, Pastor Brett Dodger, she's gonna pick up on it pretty quick and be like, oh, pastor Joe Schmo. Came in this time and he's never presented here and he falls within this boundary line. You know, no disrespect to Pastor Dodger, but we're gonna go with this one this time, right? Like, I mean, I think we can offer discretion in that without that. I'm, I'm, to your point, I'm okay with once a quarter or something to. I would just not like to see it be once or twice a year. I, just because I think that's a little discouraging. You know, somebody's out right away, like.
So limit to once a quarter. That kind of consensus?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, what was the other?
We clarify it to everybody's points or is there anything else that we need to?
Just making sure, I think you hit it, but um, the, as it states that um. I can't remember, but it was council members uh can't give the invocation. And city employees, that would also be like some of the other committees, their, their people can't do it either. And so um maybe additional clarity on is that in fact the case where counselors can't do that? Um, or or not, but not just counselors or committee members, making it clear that you're not just talking about city councilor members. You're also talking about some of the other committees we have, their members can't either as it's written right now. And so um, um, you know, there, there may be some, some, you know, I don't know, I didn't look. Uh, some uh case law where they can in fact, and so maybe just getting clarity on, on, on.
I think in fact people do so they can. It's not whether, it's, the question isn't whether, and you can stop me if I should just stop it. It's not whether they, you can or you can't, it's what's a best practice and what's going to be um the most productive for.
Well, I think the best practice would be not limited to just council. I think best practice would be blanket it, allow everyone. Volunteering in committees and for the city and everyone to have that opportunity. Cause right here, it's restricting, saying it only applies to city council. I don't think it should only apply to city council. I think the committee should have, I mean, they run their own committees, they do the same thing we do on their level.
I think you guys are talking about two different.
So the changes I have now are, we're gonna strike the virtual. We're going to um change to apply to city council and committees if they so choose. And then limit um people to once a quarter for offering invocation rather than twice a year. So then we're, I think we're just down to the whether it's, whether you're going to allow. Members of the council to offer an invocation.
Well, I don't wanna glaze over uh Councilman Dulz's comments about the stay in the room thing either, just. He did spend quite a bit of time presenting, presenting that. I mean, I think that there's, we don't need to spend forty-five more minutes in discussion on it. I think we've beat this horse pretty good, but I'd like to acknowledge at least what, so what is it?
Rephrase it?
I don't see the reason for it at all, um, because a person can get up and leave whenever they want. In the middle of a sentence if they want to, so there's no reason to have that verbiage in there at all is, is what I think.
If we get rid of it, will he be walked out in cuffs? Cause if not, I think we should strike it.
I guess if a counselor later down the road came in and said, please everyone stay in the room while we have a moment of prayer. What would say that that's wrong?
But that's their legal first amendment right to just leave anyways. So whether it's.
What's, what's gonna say that that's a wrong thing to do?
Okay.
Well, we could sue.
Yeah, that's a, I can't imagine that hypothetical. Well, actually, it's a silly thing to say.
Cause the way I read it, just saying that you can't tell someone that they have to stay in the room is what it's saying. It's the way I'm reading.
Well, well, and I'm just, if it's not there, you're not reading it at all. Um, there's nothing, and so.
It would just be an assumption, if it's not written there, it would be an assumption that we never require anybody to stay. For anything. So it's um, I, I kind of prefer to have it stay, but.
It almost sounds like we could just scratch, stretch one and leave two.
You'd have to combine them if you did that. That would have to be, it'd need to read both languages. There'd be a way that I think you could capture one and two under the same umbrella transparently, but I do understand why you made them line item. I don't think it. It is redundant, but I think it's also redundant in the sense that it's foolproof, right? Item one. Yeah, so I, to that point, I do, I think you could make one and two into one is what I'm saying, but I don't see a problem with it being together. I don't have a problem with striking stay in the room. I don't, there's, we're not ever gonna tell somebody to direct them to stay in the room. We, we never do. I mean, we have a, we had an instance where there was somebody with a bullhorn that started screaming in the background as they marched their way outside. And nobody said anything from this dais. I wanna be clear, I can't speak for the. Community members in the, in the audience, but nobody from this dais said anything about get out, you're not welcome back in here. There was not a disruption whatsoever. I think we handled it maturely. Back to your question. Two years from now or a year from now, when we run this next election and we have new members potentially sitting up here. If one of them comes in and fumbles their words and says something, does that put us at? Does that put us in legal crosshairs?
I'm good with it or without it. It's not that big of a deal. I just, I was just, my interpretation of what it was reading, one saying that you can't tell someone not to leave. And then the other one saying that you have the right not to be told is kind of the both sides of the, is the way I read.
I don't care. I'm good with striking it as well.
Roll with it, strike it.
Okay, good. Yeah, I think, I think that's fine. Again, the po- the policy was intended to be proposed to be uh really clear. And and give the most guidance to the council on what to do and not to do uh to have the least risk of um legal challenge. But it's not comprehensive. Those were just some examples of maybe common things that might be said. Uh, so I'm, I'm happy to strike that.
We're sure thorough.
It's gonna be important that people remember that it's different than the moment of silence where like now we invite, we ask people to please be respectful and participate in the moment of silence. You can't do that with the invocation, so.
I'd also, I'd also like verification on the council uh, council members allowance to give invocation if.
If they so choose is what we did.
If they so choose, I'm not saying that someone has to give it. I'm just saying if nobody puts their name in that ad and nobody. And but one of the council members, you know, say, I wanna, you know, give an invocation, you know.
I believe the lawyer said she was gonna come back with clarity on.
Yeah, I would like clarity on that.
I'm happy to come back with an additional supplement to the legal memorandum that I provided earlier. Um, uh, the guidance is gonna be the same, that it's recommended not to do that, not only uh. Oh, really for the same reason as um I said earlier, which is it could create a pattern or practice unintentionally if.
The limitation would also be one per quarter per counselor. So I don't know if that makes a difference, like they'd have the same standard.
Oh, once a quarter per counselor? Is that, is that what you just said?
Yeah, like, like.
You'd still only be able to allow to give an invocation once a quarter, I guess is what he's.
Right, I, I think that doesn't change the pattern or practice because as a council, you're just one body. So even though there are seven of you, you know, um, if you're doing it seven times in a row, that's a pattern of the council.
If we're one body, we would be considered one. So if one counselor gave one indication for that quarter, that's it.
At this moment in time, I, I again, wouldn't recommend any uh, any uh perceived. Establishment or invocation coming from a city official or a council, but I can come back with more firm legal guidance on that.
Thank you.
Or if it's not going to change, you can just decide. But if you, if the, if the opinion's not gonna change.
The recommendation will not be.
I mean, if, 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 if nobody, I mean, if anybody's indifferent or just says, no, I mean, it is what it is. We can continue on with what we're doing, cause I think that would extend the length of time that it would take to pass this anyways, right?
It sounds like it's gonna be next meeting anyway, right?
Well, right now we have four changes, so you can make this approving the resolution with those four changes you've already decided on. Today, that, that really is the only pending one, if you might change your opinion on that.
So Mike, would you, would you ever give an invocation?
I mean, we can amend any of those, take longer, we'd have to.
I mean, I wouldn't be against it.
No, Melissa, would you ever volunteer to give an invocation?
Uh, yeah.
Jonathan?
I would. I hadn't thought about it, but I'd be willing to, yeah.
Uh, no, I would, I would.
We know, we know where Matthew stands on this. I am also a no, but the majority of the council. You know, the majority of the council that's sitting here wants to have that opportunity. Or if, if the opportunity arises, they might take us up on that. So I say at this point, we. We've allowed the counselors to do it with the same stipulations of once per quarter. Um, for the whole, the entire council.
As a body, we are one, so one, if one person gives it, that's the quarters. Fulfillment.
Yeah, I'm.
Appointed in moment of silence.
Other, yeah, otherwise it'd be moment of.
So the process though would be the same as someone that's not on the council. Um, and not just a default.
You wouldn't have to, you wouldn't have to apply.
I thought he said if somebody didn't apply and didn't show up, they would, the citizens would be given priority. Or whoever wants to participate would be given priority. It's if somebody didn't show up, that we'd have the opportunity to step in.
Like nobody else, like it's a hundred percent cricket.
But why not still participate in the process? Uh, what's it, a week in advance or something like that? It'd be easy to vet since you're on the council, you gotta be legit, so.
We, we should, I don't think we should, we should participate in the process because there's gonna be times where um. They don't show up or, you know, nobody signed up. We don't know in a week, a week in advance if, you know. So I think that leaving that out, giving us the option, you know, once per quarter. To have a counselor give the invocation, I don't have a problem with that. Um, and then if nobody else shows up and it, that we're still in that quarter, it's a moment of silence. So.
I think it's pretty simple.
But I mean, if you. Wanted to participate in the process. I mean.
Wanna read back what we have for the changes?
Yeah, can you read how the amendment, uh, how the motion should?
Well, the changes will be, first, we're making it in-person only, no virtual option. Second change is to limit invocation speakers to once per quarter of a calendar year instead of two per person, per person. Third is to uh expand the entire policy to apply to not only meetings of the S D K to city council. But um, s- city convened committees. If they choose to adopt the invocation policy. Uh, for their committees. The fourth, we will strike stay in the room um among that list of prohibited conduct. Uh, and the fifth is what I'm hearing is this council would like to allow. For members of the council. Or presumably uh committee members or any other city official to give one invocation per quarter.
If nobody, if nobody um signs up.
If nobody signs up in lieu of offering a moment of silence.
I move to approve resolution two zero two five dash zero two five A, a resolution adopting an invocation policy. For city council meetings with the mention changes.
Have a motion? All right, let's uh, Sadie, can we have a roll call vote? Well, I mean, it's gonna be unanimous, but can I have a roll call vote anyway?
Counselor Blevins?
Yes.
Counselor Tolsol?
Yes.
Councillor Hill?
Yes.
Councillor Malroy?
Yes.
Councillor Metcalf?
Yes.
Councillor Tendish?
Yes.
All right, uh, moving on, we have our second opportunity for citizen and community group comments, and I have one forum, which is Brett Dodger.
First, let me say thank you. I appreciate you guys doing the hard work of governing. It's a hard job. Thank you for doing it well. Um, as I shepherd our church through this next big step of starting a school, I'm trying to be really good stewards of the money that God has allowed us to do this. Uh, in this process, after uh we are allowed this zone change, we'll begin the annexation process. So in my study and conversation with Melanie and Sadie, we will have over four hundred thousand dollars in SDCs. You guys all understand SDCs. I think I was in your seat when we got the SDC started. It's a good thing, especially as you see all this development go in. So I started doing some work saying, could I come to you and ask you, could you, because we're nonprofit, doing something for the benefit of the city? Reduce or waive SDCs? And I told Melanie I was going to do that, and she said, you better talk with me first. So I did, and she told me, you guys don't have that option. Because in your municipal code, you can only waive SDCs when you're working with another public agency as the school or the fire district. So, okay, I let that go. That's not an option for you. I just want to suggest you, I think you should have that option. Uh, down the road, as this city expands, and here's just an example. Y M C A has an opportunity to come in here and do something really big for the community, and they're a nonprofit. You can't waive their SDCs and it could, it could derail the whole thing because for a large project, even much longer larger than ours, it could be a million dollars in SDCs to do something. So obviously no action could be taken. I'm just going to suggest to you, for the sake of this future in the city, when you have nonprofits, even some that are within the city now, I know Art Ant Farm has done an amazing job. If they want to do something, uh, you can't help them by waiving or reducing SDCs. If I was in your seat, I would want to at least have the option, not that you're obligated to do that. You should have the option if you so desire. So that's kind of an FYI. Melanie, thank you for um helping me understand where we stand with that, and I'll just leave you. Thank you again for doing the hard work you're doing here. I really appreciate it.
Brent, I'd like to say thank you for paving the way for all of us. Um, you you sat up here for a number of years and uh we appreciate what you put into the effort that you put into this city. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, that's all I've, that's all we've got for the day. So let's uh, we're going to move on to mayor and council, council reports. Mike, you have anything?
So thank everyone for sitting through the long meeting, staff for preparing us for it, and thank you everybody for the good conversation. Appreciate everyone.
Yeah, same here. And I just want to take the opportunity right now to kind of speak my own piece. Not everything always looks right to everybody from perspective, but just know that our job here is to uh provide an atmosphere for all kinds and very welcoming of it and keeping that into perspective.
I'd just like to thank everybody for coming. I really appreciate seeing a full room earlier today, and I appreciate the good conversation as always between people, especially members up here. I think it's good for us to be able to articulate conversations, whether we're on the same page or not. I think it's healthy and I'd love to see it encouraged, right? Uh, people should lean into difficult things more often and make them more resilient. That's my personal opinion. But uh, that being said, I'd also, I did attend the Christmas tree lighting with Melanie and I saw uh uh, Councilman Tendish was there. He had to step in for the mayor and shaken like a leaf. He still made it through though. Couldn't hear him, but we made it through. Uh, it was an incredible event to see the community out there and light the tree, the tree. I thank you so much, the community members for that that sponsored that Scott and then buying that tree and donating it for for the community was really cool. I will say there was a ton of kids involved and there was a ton of family members and it was really cool to see the atmosphere of the community alive. And there was way more people than I had thought. That was my first time being able to attend one of these and I was super impressed. Um, Connie and them did a very, very good job at putting that together. So very cool to see the community. I'm excited to hear that councilman or excuse me, Commissioner Diana is representing rural voices and it seems like she's very poised to help aggressively. And so I'm excited to see the future and what's what aid we may have at higher levels going outside of the city, so. Council Dulz.
Thank you to the um, community for attending and uh your participation. Thank you for the quality of the material that we had to go through. And as always, thank you for the conversation and the dialogue. Um, it's uh uh, every single one of us is different, uh, but we can all uh talk about it and I really appreciate that. So thank you.
Thank you, guys. I realize that we missed one other thing that was brought up. With uh code enforcement, um it it what's their stipulations? What what are their standards? Okay, because when your tags are expired, you have ninety days to go get those. Um, found that out from a police officer who kindly pulled me over to tell me. And uh, my car is parked on the side of the road every day, and it has never been tagged or what, you know, nothing. And so help me if I came out without a warning before my vehicle was towed, right? Like and then it is holiday season, family members come. Sometimes some people have the uncle that likes to press the the envelope. So is there a place where or is is there a place where people can, like, is there something on our website that gives information on how to get information from uh code enforcement and what the stipulation standards are? Cause I know there's like a standard of a vehicle not being on the side of a road for more than like forty eight hours and they're if if it if and if they are giving warnings, right? Or if that or if these vehicles are being removed due to legal matters that are beyond. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was brought up again. I don't know the whole details behind the situations, but um, I do know code enforcement is working pretty hard and we've gotten a lot of uh RVs taken care of and a lot of suspicious vehicles taken care of. As it was pointed out, yeah, there's a lot of ditched vehicles that um code enforcement is taking care of, so. I really know how to.
I can look into that. I'm not sure what all the details are and like how many vehicles have been towed. I know that the um, I know typically we try to give, you know, work with people um and not surprise them. Um, if you're, if somebody's tags are expired ninety days and they're on the street, they don't have to, they can just be towed, so.
Well, that wouldn't be a code enforcement thing too. That would be like the Clackamas County. Seeing it and taking care of it.
Yep, um, and and so I'll have to look into like how many vehicles have been towed. I know that we do try to stay up on like not letting um problem vehicles sit around town or or RVs, um, but I can check on that for you.
Um, other than that, I think tonight was uh long and very um I I enjoyed the communication. I enjoyed the 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 talk. Um, I appreciate everybody that came out. Um and I appreciate the hard work that the employee or the city city puts in and thank you for coming to uh cause I had probably had the most legal questions tonight, so um yeah, on that, I hope everybody has a good night and a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
All right, that's that's me up. Um, an unfortunate situation put me in this chair tonight and uh at the Christmas tree lighting ceremony, and I just want to wish the mayor a speedy recovery. Um, I was completely uncomfortable at the tree lighting. I was completely uncomfortable cut sitting up here tonight, so um hopefully I did, hopefully I did an okay job, but um um, I mean, you guys said, you guys already said it all, just like the mayor always says, you guys uh you know, this is a great council and we have discussions. We don't have arguments. Um, I appreciate the effort that we put in um as councillors and uh, you know, we we ask questions, we we ask questions, we talk it out, we have great discussions and uh you know, I I've said it before, but I learn a little bit more every single, every single council meeting, so I appreciate all of you for that and uh myself, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and uh at with that, um, this meeting is adjourned.
We did it.